It is noon, so I'm going to call for order this regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Bonormi. Madam Assistant Administrator, please call for them.
Commissioner Sebastian Marsis, Commissioner Raymond Lefont,
You.
Mayor O'Neal Zivard.
President.
Mayor Lefont.
They'll arrive for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Thank you, everybody, for coming. Both commissioners, I know we've got somewhat lengthy agenda and we do have two development agenda items at the very end after the budget. I don't know if you want to move that up just to the people on the way. I don't know how long the budget can take. Do you want to follow the order of the agenda? Okay, madam. Then I'd like to call Agenda Item Number 11. Discussion Regarding Doxa LLC. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll start with Citizens Speaker. Again, welcome to Agenda Item 11 and 12.
Jackie Bode. Hi, Nina.
Hello.
My name is Jackie Bode. As you all know, Raymond and Sammy, we also you two, Valerie. I'm here on behalf of some citizens or a lot of citizens in our community and ask if we can possibly reconsider both of y'all. Sammy, I hope you're listening to me. Both of y'all's consideration on the taxes. I know that I think you, Mr. Raymond, wanted to double it and I think you, Sammy, wanted to keep it the same. And the thing that we're concerned of in our community is we're concerned how much you are spending on things that are not for our city. I hope you understand that, that we do want more lights. We do want more things for the people, you know? The roads, I know y'all say you want it, but if you spend over 60% more of that detailed tax that was turned in for the 25 budget, that's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. And we're still upset. We're still not understanding what your reasons are for wanting double tax and wanting the same tax. Why don't we just go to a happy medium for everybody and have a zero tax? Or let the people tell you what they want? Because it always seems like when somebody comes here to ask for y'all's consideration. You know, I know you know what's going on today. I know you know that our taxes aren't higher. I know that you know that we can't afford to. I know that you know we can't afford deals. And this is for everybody, you know? God bless y'all that you serve the military and maybe you're doing okay. But there's a lot of us in our community that are not. And so I would ask you and please with you to please consider having the tax at zero. You know, maybe next year when we have a better chance to get a hold of things and put the budget into perspective and that the money goes where it should be, that we can have that tax again, you know? But I ask for your consideration, please. Thank you.
Do you know the citizens who heard? The citizens heard and closed. I couldn't do some more house. We do have an open public hearing on the 25-26 annual budget. So both of you can open that hearing right now. If anybody would like to give comment or input on the 2025-2026 annual budget.
Do y'all have a budget that we can see what y'all are planning?
Post it.
Post it where?
Should be on the city's website. It's posted on the city's website. I dropped any comments. If not, we can move on. All right, if there's none, then I'll close the public hearing on citizens' comments on the proposed 25-26 annual budget. I would like to then move on to the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, approval of protest acts, and approval of financial budgets. Does anybody want to pull any of those items for further discussion? Or if not, we'll put on them as well. Table? Okay. If you have a motion to approve the consent agenda, if we have a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. All right, question carries. Again, I'd like to move forward to Agenda Item Number 11. Discussion Regarding Doxa LLC and the development of the property generally located at 154 14 West Loop 1604 South in Bonormi. Are they here?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, is this as the Board of Commissioners or as the zoning board?
This is the Board of Commissioners. They have not submitted anything to the city which contains pieces.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Gabriel. I'm at Doxa. We are located in Oskin, but because most of our jobs are coming from Laredo or coming from Houston, we chose Vonormi to develop our future headquarters, office with shop and all kind of gathering that we need, we have. And for us, in order to build the shop, we set a proposal that we need some help from the city because we'll have to build a street, a main street, coming from 1604. And why we are asking for this help is because we are bringing business here in Vonormi. We're going to have between 30 and 40 employees. So we need mechanics, we need painters, bodywork, people in the office, attracting company. But besides our project, we have other businesses that we'd like to develop on that street. So this is like an overview of the project. Is this in the city or not?
Yes, it's in the city.
And it's in the city.
Yeah, we're the first property outside of the city.
Okay. It's on this proposed road. It's that private road, calm road.
Needs to become a public road because that will bring the customers to any of the businesses on that street because on that street, we plan to have at the end, at the end of the project, four different businesses, not just a shop. And at the end of the property, there is a big, from my understanding, a big project with a community, with houses, to be built. So if that road will be built for us, then actually will serve the entire community behind us also with that project to start.
Right. You said houses or apartments?
From my understanding, houses. I saw some pictures when the previous mayor was here. I saw some pictures with that project.
Now, this looks like apartments.
Apartment.
But he started about the property behind this apartment.
Behind. Oh, yeah. So on your property, on here, it looks like there's apartments.
Yes, yes. That's just something to show possibilities.
Okay.
It's a very investment.
Question, estimated time to start or reduce?
Would we like to start yesterday?
Start yesterday?
Yes, we need it ASAP. It's very important to start ASAP, the shop itself. For the entire business to be moved from Oskin to Vonormi, it's a different procedure. We need to see exactly what the lady said about taxes to see if we'll have a different taxation compared with Oskin. If it's better than Oskin, yes. We'll move the entire company here. Does make sense?
Estimated time complete?
The most the bank wants in one year and six months, 18 months. But for us, to be durable, because we have to pay a loan, construction loan, for us is 12 months. And let's say we start on November 1st. On November 1st, we have to accrue to start. Next year in November, we need to get in, we have to certify all the financing. So one year.
How many will he request to the city?
Well, he still has to apply for, he would have to apply for a planned development district. Yes, Brandon?
I can give you guys a breakdown of the Doxa. Hi, good evening or good afternoon, everybody. So yeah, just to give everybody a breakdown of the process with potential work. The property is not located in the city limit, so there would be, first of all, a process that would need to be annexed. Because right now, they don't have the conditions to do what they want me to do out in TJ. So part of that would be the property needs to be annexed. Anytime you annex a piece of property, it needs to be properly zoned. There are also certain engineering and brick and mortar type of considerations. There's some discussions about the roadway that would be needed and their needing some flexibility on the construction of that roadway. So there's a lot of different pieces that involve, you know, consent from the city, potentially some negotiation. Pretty standard on a project like this. So the first step is a development agreement. That's the mechanism that a piece of property is typically annexed and zoned. So the development agreement spells out all the terms of that. The zoning is going to be what the development standards are, if there's any kind of, you know, relief they need or any kind of modifications from the code on development standards. And so all that would be handled through the development agreement. So this, you know, today is a presentation of the high level of the project itself. And they're working with a layman's attorney. And to my knowledge, the layman's attorney is already starting to draft out some potential development agreement language. And so the next step is that development agreement comes before the board, transfer process. Y'all discuss it publicly, typically, and citizens have the ability to provide some input. And then the zoning happens and all that. In the perfect world, usually, yeah, everybody arrives. It's something that works for them and works for the city. It's in the best interest of everybody and it's approved and annexed and zoned.
So also, you want to explain it's a 30-acre tract, but you're playing on what, you have three or four pieces?
Yeah, four pieces. Four pieces. That translates to four different businesses at the end.
Yes.
So the first stage for us is to adjust the shop. The main street, that we need your help, and the shop.
When you say any help on the road, what do you want?
So if that road will become public road, we'll continue the, we propose to keep it there. That way, we help us to build that road and then to take care of it.
I know we had a, like, we had a three-way plan that we could city. Is that correct, performance or?
I didn't review the alignment. I didn't review the proposed alignment before we did any of that.
So, you know, they're being pretty blunt. They're saying, hey, you know, they need a road to access their property. And, you know, the kind of development they're planning, they're showing us a plan. It's got multifamily on this track. It's got hidden commercial. It's got some other commercials. So, you know, the kind of traffic impact that they're going to have, they're going to need a road. It's going to be a decent-sized road. And so the city also, from the long-term perspective, we talked about the need to have some connectivity in the form of some sort of collector who provides something other than having to go up to I-35 to get around. Right now, if you want to get over it, you've got to go up 1604 and I-35. So an east-west collector makes a lot of sense. And so that's why when you have a situation like this, we have the developer that needs, they need something from the city. They need you guys to give them permission. And so city's in the driver's seat on this. And so there's an opportunity to work with them and say, hey, you know, contention upon this development and this planned development district, this zoning that the city would be consenting to, we'd like you to work with us and try to align this street to where it works with some sort of collector to where, you know, it'll go to the end of their property and it'll provide a stub, a connection for the next guy to come in. And when they develop, then we'll get the road on the rest of the half of it. And that's how, that's how over time incrementally you get yourself an east-west collector. So as Valerie said, Ida, the city engineer, this is her pro-rumpor responsibility. She's looking at what a potential alignment could look like. She's going to come back with that and we can figure out how to make that line up and fit with what they're doing so we can make sure all the pieces come together.
All right. Sure. How we see a project like this is like a long term. How the community will look in ten years. We're going to bring value with this road and it might be that we're going to have four different businesses over there. And then the whatever community behind, if that changes something and attracts more people to live in Vonormi, so it's a win-win.
All right. Any other questions?
Because of today, I think it's a good plan for the future of the city and the developers.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 11. Discussion Regarding the Barrett Sports Complex and the development of the property generally located at 14445, Texas Loop 1604 in Bonormi. Is that great? Okay, well, then we'll go back to the top. If you don't mind, we'll put the bikes up. Very good. Agenda Item 2, I guess this is the second number two. Discuss, consider, take possible action regarding the final audit reports for this year 21, 22, and 23 and 24. It all matter in the way they're due.
Moseca, do you have your proceed? Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Milan Endosa, I'm a partner with the firm of Doxa and Associates. And please to come before you to let you know the status of the audits that we have conducted. The city initially targeted back in, I want to say February, to perform the audits of 23 and 24 and also to prepare financial statements for 21 and 22. So this is basically catching you up to bring you current as far as the audits are concerned. And so we have provided the city copies of all the different reports and financial statements that we assisted the city in preparing. And we leave Valerie kind of passing those out to you. So for 21 and 22, as I mentioned, we prepared a financial statements. There was a lot of, it was difficult to obtain records for those years. And also, there was an investigation that is going on that prevented us from really being able to rely on the numbers and on the records that the city had. So we proceeded. We went ahead and prepared financial statements so we have an idea what, for example, the general fund fund balance was at each of those years and what revenues and expenditures you've had based on the records that were provided to us. Those reports are for internal purposes, they're not for external purposes, okay? Because we are really not giving you an opinion on those, okay? But we're just for your own internal purposes. For 23 and 24, we've also assisted you in preparing the financial statements for the city for those years. For the year ended 2023, September 2023, we issued a disclaimer of an opinion, of an opinion. And the city, we indicated they're the basis for our disclaimer. In other words, we're not giving you an assurance on those numbers. It's because there was a fraud investigation going on regarding the finances of the city during that year and entire years. So the status of that investigation, we were not able to obtain a status on that. And I think it was unknown. It was out of the city's hands and it was, we instructed by, not sure what federal agency, but it was a federal agency. And so the opinion reports for 2023, if you find that binder, it's on page one. So even though we're not issuing an opinion on those numbers, we were able to see what the city's finances were for that year, for 2023. And I'll give you some, like, really quick highlights of those numbers. Your overall financial position for the city, you had assets of 2.7 million, 2,759, 292. You had liabilities of 896,408. And you had a net position of 1.9 million dollars, which is primarily, a lot of it had to do with your capital investments. And so the building that the city has and property equipment. And then, so basically, at the end of the year, the overall, if you count the, all the assets, all the liabilities, the debt, that's the liabilities that the city has at the end of the year, you were in a positive of 1.9 million, including, like I said, everything that had been, that long-term and short-term finances. With regards to the fund balance, your fund balance in 2023 was 200,695. And so that included making some adjustments. In 2022, it was around 700,000. And so after we reviewed the books, we made, we provided you with adjustments and corrections. So that brought the fund balance at the beginning of the year down to 200, actually to about 400,000. And so at the end of 23, you ended up with the 200,000 that I returned. And I'll give you a quick. The reports are kind of long, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. Yeah, on page 40 of the 2023 notes to the financial statements, we had, we had a couple of large corrections. One had to do with court fine fees payments and another one to favorable taxes and favorable liabilities. So the beginning fund balance for general fund at the end of, at the beginning of 23 was corrected to 435,456. So that's for, that's for 2023. For 2024, the opinion report is on page one and two. And three is a long report. And there is different, what we call opinion units, which is really the different types of funds that the city has. For the governmental activities, we have a qualified opinion. For general fund, qualified opinion. For capital improvement, streets and the other funds that remain, we had on a modified report. So basically, the report, the report and the reliability of the numbers got better in 2024 since you had basically people full-time in 2024 that were keeping the books and were maintaining records. So things have been improved dramatically from 21 to 2024. However, there were still some information that, that needed improvement, improvements. And so we had to qualify the report for certain parts of the governmental activities. And it had to do February with court fines. There was some accounting in there that issues that needed to be reconciled, which I believe the city has now in 2025, has started to work on addressing a lot of those issues and they're probably, you know, way to get it fixed. Valerie, I don't know if you want to jump in here and talk a little bit about the court fines.
The court funding fee, the one that you changed the software, this one you moved up to new software. And then now we're also working with any companies. So Lynette is here. She's also a court administrator. And so she's helping us with the next stuff like.
Okay, on page 13 and 14 is the balance sheet for the governmental activities. So you'll see what the fund balance is for the general fund. So for the general fund, the fund balance has been reduced. So it's now 60, almost 67,000 dollars. Quite different from the figures that are previously mentioned. And then on pages 16 and 17, you have a presentation of the revenues and the expenditures that the city has had. So for 2024, you had revenues of 800 in the general fund. The first column on the left side, 862,710. But you had more expenses. You had expenditures of 993,391. So overall, you dipped into the fund balance that you had in the beginning by 133,697. You started out with a 200,000 rounding in your fund balance. So you brought down your fund balance to 66,000, almost 67,000 dollars there. So as I mentioned, the city has cut out now with the audit reports that are required. And so it's positive, that's positive for the city. I think moving in the right direction. As far as the accountability and the financial reporting with these reports and hopefully your next audit, you'll be able to apply for grants and maybe receive some of the assistance the city needs in making its capital projects and other items that the city may need. We've issued a separate letter that hopefully you got also. It's called the Audit Communication Letter. And that letter has a lot more detailed information in there. And the adjustments that we recommended to management and the issues goes a lot into detail about the areas that needed, that the city had problems with. The biggest area, I think, had to do with the quarterly favorable taxes which had been, the city had been behind in preparing that. And that was, the city was able to catch up to that this year. And I think now it's curving in doing all this reporting. And so that is one issue that was, that has been addressed. And court fines, I think, as Valerie mentioned, has already, I think there's some corrective action on that area. And then hopefully with, with the new, the next help, that can also be completed. So there's room for improvement. And but like I said, I mentioned, it's quite an improvement for the city, you know, to have, to have better reports and accountability, you know, from 2021 to now. So that concludes my presentation. And I'll, you know, like I said, it's So uh that concludes my presentation and I'll, you know, like I said, it's a lot more that I could explain in all detail. But uh overall, that those are the highlights that you need to be aware of as of course. So I'll be happy to address any questions or Valerie's here also for uh she's the one that probably handled a lot of the work. So a lot of work went into y'all's party in getting this done, so you know, congratulations, you're all getting catching up. Any questions for us, commissioners or mayor?
No, but I'd like to do some of these things with this tab. Look in the back, uh so it says that there's missing minutes.
Yes, part of what we reviewed was uh as auditors, we looked at all the minutes that the that the commissioners had. And uh some of the minutes were missing. Uh and uh also the agenda packets, you know, maybe they need to be kept for longer periods of time. So those communications are already taken, basically, but again, she was able to.
So the those minutes were not missing, they've been.
Yeah.
And they've been done.
Can can this then be adjusted to the front?
Uh well, we 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 uh we we could look at it and and but then we'll have to reissue this thing this uh letter. But it it's not gonna change. I guess it could change, you know, we don't know what's in the what in the minutes, but we would have to basically do additional work. So I don't know that at this point you want that. Um of course, it would cost you more money to cross it, that's.
So previous to twenty twenty three, there are missing minutes, like twenty twenty two is.
November twenty two is minutes, January twenty three, August twenty three. So which number?
Well, the ones for pre- previous, the one before I got here, no, I don't have.
Okay, that's that's one we're mentioning, that's a lot of older minutes.
I don't, I don't have that.
Yeah, this pertains specifically, uh in our in our letter, it says November eighteen twenty twenty two, January ninth, twenty twenty three, August twenty four, twenty twenty three, and November fifteen, twenty twenty three.
So obviously, there are.
So at the time that we did this report, this is dated in July, you know, for us to complete the audit, with this is it was missing. She may have found some of these items subsequently, you know.
So we have no record of the minutes?
No.
The agendas?
November twenty twenty two?
At least any of their recordings here.
Yeah, recordings.
So they were recorded?
Yeah, you don't have the video of the recordings, right?
Can't can we run the time through through AI and track through separate minutes? I'm just saying, we we uh definitely, we need to have written minutes if we have audio recording.
If you've got the audio recording, we can.
We give a year to do it.
We can transpose them just for our personal records, this is, I think, just more equal and more snapshot, a little bit like that, so.
Yeah, the main thing that we're saying here is we're giving you a recommendation for the future.
Right.
That uh you have uh the the minutes not only in paper, but also electronically, you know, some, you know, on the web, maybe make sure you don't lose it. And uh you know, that you keep up with uh that you keep the records. Uh don't have the exact details on the on the law regarding how long the the agenda packets need to be kept, but I think we discussed that, yeah.
That should be in depth there. Okay, what about the charter of accounts and budget? So the general ledger of accounts is not up to properly present revenues and expenditures by function, department, and object. In addition to charter accounts, does not have all accounts that are necessary to account for all the city's transactions. In addition, the official budget for twenty three, twenty four was not prepared presenting expenditure by function, department, and object category. We recommend that charter accounts be reviewed and modified as necessary to present expenditure by function, department, and object. Right, we addressed that already or?
Well, there's they they characterize differently than we had previously, so that's something that Lynette's been.
Is our proposed budget in accordance with this or not?
The current budget.
The one, yeah, the one.
So the one that we will present for uh the the next year will be compliant to what Eli needs.
One second. Can you explain the court fine issue for everybody, like what was the issue and how did we resolve that?
So in twenty twenty four, we had to pay ninety eight thousand dollars for previous unpaid court fines. So the the comptroller's office, um there was an overpayment. There was some discrepancy about how much it was. Originally, it was thought to be a seventy thousand dollar overpayment. The comptroller's final number was thirty five thousand dollar overpayment. So they printed us thirty five thousand dollars, they closed out up to quarters and just sent us a bill for ninety eight thousand dollars. So we paid that bill and it crossed up to current and that was up to quarter three of twenty twenty three or? I don't remember exactly. Um but but since then, that's also one reason we got the new court court software. Um there were some things in the old one that had never been closed out, never been input, and it skewed the numbers. So we are going back to twenty twenty four.
I was gonna go to twenty twenty, I was gonna go back to the next, I can go back three years. So I was gonna go back three years and actually re-audit those to see what it is, because they gave us estimates with the with the uh comptroller on what to pay. And I do feel that we do have an overpayment, but I'm gonna have to prove that to the comptroller before they reverse the refund.
Incredible, but this is, if somebody gets to say a traffic citation for a hundred dollars, a portion of that, we have to send to the state.
Yes, sir.
So we're talking about is accounting for that and make sure you send their property.
There is a there is a percentage of states that have to go back based upon every ticket, depending on what the offense is on.
Also, with uh from my understanding that what uh that they has done is that she was finding out that some of the adjustments, you know, let's say, if somebody gets a ticket, the judge, you know, determines that it shouldn't be a hundred dollars, it should be eighty dollars, so that twenty dollar difference was never would never like maybe recorded on the on the city's record, on the city's subsidiary.
Well, it is recorded.
Right.
It was recorded in the, there's different sections. So it was recorded in one section, but then it wasn't, it wasn't reconciled and you didn't worry.
Right.
Right, so it wasn't closed out. So what was happening, it was adding that extra money into what needs owed and then compiling it to be paid to the state.
But as far as the cash that was collected, that did make it to the book, so we we don't have no issues with.
Right.
My cash being collected. So a lot of it has to do with understanding the accounting system and the and and the court system and matching that information together and getting it directly presented. You know, so those were the problems of.
The general ledger?
General ledger. And. General ledger, basically, the it are the books that the city has.
Right.
So governmental accounting is kind of complex, so it's not like your regular accounting for like a like a regular business. There's a lot of rules and and regulations. And so if someone's not aware of how those books for a city need to be kept, then there's gonna be a lot of issues in in that accounting. The cash is, like I said, the cash receipts may be correct, they make they make it into the books, but how they're presented and categorized may not be presented and also the calculations. For example, we're we're talking about the court fines, you know, so on the court fine system, you have the money, the tickets that have been that have been issued and the collections that have been collected. So that information needs to get into the books of the city. So that wasn't being reconciled. So on the books, you may have, let's say, collections of, like you said, a hundred dollars. But over here, you may have collections of, you know, a different amount that never that never matched. So we were having some significant differences between those two. And the same the same is true for anything else, you know, there was a uh we made, we gave copies to all of the all the adjustments that we proposed. So a lot of it is just the the uh transactions not being recorded in the right funds, you know. So now that you have more of a a more experienced accountant, a more experienced, you know, person with more knowledge of governmental accounting, you know, she'll be able to do the assistance that she needs, hopefully, right, on this.
Right, okay. So that's what you're saying, so it was not time to re-reconcile or re-recognize it?
Right, right, so that's why, you know, we you hired us on February, we started the audit in April. And then, you know, we kind of stopped in June because the nine forty ones had not been completed by the consultant that you had hired. And so then, two weeks after that, we continued with the audit, with the audit. And then we we uh met with with Valerie, we went over all the details. Then after that, we met, we met with the mayor, I think it was in August eleventh, we had a meeting with him where we were, where there's reports in detail. And so that's been the process, you know, that we usually follow, making sure that all the audit issues are addressed, right?
Now, with the nine forty ones, those are from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty two, where nine forty one is. And that's something that we're still going back and forth with the IRS over. We did submit corrections um when we hired um that CPA to work on that, so that's something that we're still ongoing.
But we're we're doing forty nine forty ones?
Our ninety one since twenty twenty three are all good. So we we use um they're they're paid every day for you.
Yeah.
Uh when you talk about communication of internal controls?
Yes.
What is, summarize it a little bit, what's the recommendation?
With the, oh, okay. Well, basically, that kind of gives you an explanation that we're required to let you know if there are significant findings. There's a difference between material findings and significant deficiencies on internal controls. So there are the two ones is like, basically, if you don't address the problems that were like the general ledger is and the quarterly returns is what we determine that those were those were uh material. Uh if you don't address those issues, then you will have errors on your financial reports, right, you know? And then the the court fines issue and the charter accounts and the manage, those are still important things that need to be addressed. And I believe that you've been addressing now uh those items, all all these areas that we uh covered. But basically, uh our as 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 your auditors, we're independent, so we come here and we review your books.
Yeah.
If there's any areas that need to be addressed, that's what we're doing here in this letter, we're communicating that uh information. This is information for city council, part of the city's record.
Thank you, we finally catch up, it's been a terrible two and a half years for for you.
Yes, and uh you know, like I said, we Mario, Mario was a a main auditor. He and I worked on this. I mean, he, there's a long list of of emails. We came here and did some work in on, you know, in person and some of it we we did remote. But uh it was quite a bit of work for us, like I said, because it took us all the way back from from April through August to get all this done. So so.
When do we start on the twenty five?
I'm sorry?
When do we start on the next one?
Uh we need to be hired first.
Okay. No work for free. All right, do we need to vote on to approve the audits?
I'm gonna go to the office.
Sure, set them?
Yeah. Do you have most of your second audits?
Nice.
All favor say aye? There he is.
Thank you so much.
Uh move on, I bid on and pre-discuss and consider take possible action to extend the city's contract with Capone Towing for one year. Anybody here from Capone Towing?
We we have that in progress that we can work on that. So. Um so with that, this we still get twenty five percent of the the tow fees, but the storage fees, the daily fees, the processing fees, any options are a hundred percent the same. As where before, we got twenty five percent of each section. Now, we get twenty five percent of the tow fee, two point seven hundred percent, but all the storage and daily fees are the same.
Is the is the uh storage lot is ready to go?
We're using it.
It's operational?
Yeah.
Have we received any funds yet?
Uh two thousand dollars so far, so.
Now, we have a tow contract, do we have to have a tow contract?
Well.
Like, do we have to give an exclusive, could we let anybody or what kind of pragmatically?
By giving them an exclusive payment, that's we get the rebate, otherwise, we're just paying the charge rate. So by having a contract, it allows them to give us a rebate, we're not receiving that with a percentage.
Do we have to bid or?
We did bid.
We did bid last time.
Can we extend it without bidding again? So the prior contract, it allowed for extension?
Yes.
But but there's a different term to it because for you, yeah, exclusively, we have to use our our.
If we call in for a regular jurisdiction, we can tell them to.
Can we say something?
Yes, sir.
Well, I know uh you know, the agenda, they want to extend it for another year.
Right.
You know, but uh we wanted to know, you know, how much was like, I was talking to Valerie, you know, the last week regarding if there was any updates on on for other tow tow charges.
Right.
But they said they had already done, I guess, extending the the contract on it, so I don't know if it was actually top the top of the file size or what.
How's our performance?
Well, that was two, very good, very good.
Y'all have any issues?
So, Eric, I may, um, let's have a vote to the city, uh, pleasure with you guys also.
Yeah.
Um with with that being put out there, uh I have also helped out a lot of people for toll lines. I'm not too sure exactly what the percentage is or what they charge, but in the other cities that I have worked at the pool, we have flat rate. Especially here in the city of Monona, because it's under five miles. Any regular tow here in San Antonio, Texas, regulated by TBR, it's a hundred twenty dollars, as long as it's inside inside sixty oh four. So just kind of keep that in mind, we're under ten miles. And we're we're actually they're using the opposite, so with that being said, it would make the most sense to have them have a flat rate. They would be, that's going on, but they're a hundred fifteen dollars plus a fifteen dollar fuel charge fee, because that's standard.
Well, the the fuel fee, the the fuel fee is is regulated by TBR, it's twenty percent. So that's.
Yes, it's like, it goes from eight to fifteen dollars.
Yeah, it's it's part of a, it's twenty percent of the code.
Right, uh so but we don't follow the TBR.
How about Chacon does?
Right, so with them having a contract with us, we can tell them the amount and they can add anywhere from fifteen, you know, which is anywhere from fifteen to ten dollars extra for the food for the food truck. Which was still followed, I'm pretty sure, a significant amount of rate amount. In other words, because we're the city and they work for us and we're giving them the majority of our tolls, whether it's accidents, benefits, or whatever case may be, it should be a flat fee, because it's it's under a ten mile radius.
Yeah.
Why, so if if a tow is about a hundred twenty bucks?
Uh and the city's nine twenty, but that's not including the food charge.
What's up, say, why do you need twenty four dollars for the gas to tow it in the city of Monona?
I honestly, I think this is something that that can possibly be achieved, not yet, I don't mind either. I have a lot of input, like I said, this isn't much of a Florida to live on, uh and I'm pretty good at it. Um I think it's it'd be a good idea to just see what we can talk, you know? There's also multiple towing lots in San Antonio that would love to have a business challenge, towing buggies, Texas towing. Everybody's, everybody rather do a little and get a lot than than to do a lot and not get enough, you know? Because uh right now, I I believe that we are saying, Capone, for every vehicle that brings to the yard, between two forty to two fifty per vehicle. And that's within less than five mile radius, because most of the traffic staff, they're within the city limits. So they're not traveling fifteen point miles radius.
Right.
So the way the fee should work, because uh obviously, we don't follow the TBR, right? But we are a city, uh you should have a tow fee, a city fee, and then it'd be a tow fee, and then a passing fee.
Please, do you have a thought about that?
Oh, I'm not saying you don't, I'm just saying that's that's what should be there. I'm not just saying that.
So Dave and I put it together, and then we previously passed a board in last year, for the home up, they've governed all of that, we need to set that up.
Yeah, so I just haven't seen anything else, you know, I'm just I'm just throwing information up, that's all. Uh.
So so the daily fee, the storage fee, the impact fee, the notification fees, any options are a hundred percent of us because our impact.
Right.
The tow is where our previous contract has been, we wanted twenty five percent of it. So that's that's where our current service is. So the only thing Chacon will pay for is the tow.
What do they charge for a tow?
Well, see, we went to the max allowed by TBR, which is the the base fee is two seventy two, and then we get twenty five percent of that, they get seventy five percent of that. Same with the fuel charge, they get seventy five, they get twenty five, and then everything else is us.
That would that would you're saying that's really over.
Oh, yes.
Over a lot of price, right?
Absolutely.
Shouldn't be sticking.
Yeah, so this is gonna work. You said that we've been there probably and we're trying to not to pass it out.
Well, no, I'm saying now that we're making the impound fees, do we do we need to charge two seventy five for a tow? Why don't we go to the the median rate of one twenty uh a little bit less for us?
Well, so because in the contract, it's two fifty five.
Yeah, but in the contract, we're using their facility, so technically we have our facility now that had what, that's how it makes sense to sit on and talk to them. And the the limit game is specifically to the most the most public company.
It's impossible for them to go month to month, we can maybe bid out.
When does the contract up?
It's it's August. August, we did it August twenty three, didn't react until September twenty three, so it's been two years.
So we have September.
Um. How resonant.
In the trucking industry, our first hand meeting is towing companies. So whenever they find you in the side of the road, you are like uh gold mine for them and they want all the money because they know they it's an insurance behind and things like that. But in your case, I think you have, you're the driver and you can sit down with ten tow towing companies and have lower than one hundred twenty, because they 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 look for business. And there are many, many, many towing companies. And you can negotiate, why you're gonna find one if you can.
Is this part of the city, or?
Uh we actually know it's mostly, but they're like like a little rock. It could be, it is to me, it is to me, and they're especially when when you know our officers are, you know, act actively looking for the you know, who's 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 whatever, whatever the case may be, you know, they're 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 very active, they're very attentive to it, they are. Um but again, uh I would sacrifice the potential that for letting that that city community have and then even. On contract, we've known.
Can we extend it for less than a year?
Or you have to ask him, I mean, we've got just the contract we're having now, so we can ask him to him uh sold over a year.
I mean, do we have an automatic right to renew or?
Yes.
Yes.
It's up to the city to do one year renewal period, it's available to us.
And it's exclusive?
Yes. Unless they're.
Alright.
But doesn't it uh being the yard had your own impound lot, doesn't that uh change the the contract?
We included it, thought we were going to announce it when we opened it, the storage is.
I mean, again, I don't think we should have a maximum fine on any, especially if it's double the community standard. So maybe we can. But if 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 the contract expires, we have no towing or maybe install somebody, it's gonna be need to see a couple months to.
So yeah, we agree, the contract has expired, is there an order obligated to pay us twenty five percent? And we could call whoever we want.
The county would also, we use the county to dispatch tow devices, they're totally on.
Yeah, but we can always at any time hire a private tow and John's towing buggies, you can just call Dave.
No, we have to contract it, we're gonna do it, we have to bid it.
The cities that we've had, they know they have to do it with us, they're they want our business, not the other way around.
But we have to open it.
Right, but at the same time, for now, until you can actually negotiate it.
Nobody knows that option.
Yeah.
And so.
Did we we didn't we didn't post a bidding?
We did.
We did?
Yeah, but we have, we did when we originally did the contract.
Oh, yeah.
We've got the on board extension, we have months.
Okay. How long would that take? I'd say we we offer them like a three month extension. If I could bid on it, we'd be good on it. They are prescribed, so that's.
Well, first things first, I think they're in addition to Saturday, talk to them, okay, this is what we got, you know, just go through the things, kind of just chop it down, you just gotta do what makes the most sense.
I think that we have a temporary fix, but we can bid it and we can better. Better contract.
We can do it now.
It is except we're just we're sticking it to everybody who's towed. I've been towed. Five, six hundred bucks, right? Now, I'm playing a restaurant and it costs me like five hundred bucks. Uh you know, there's a moral aspect to it, too, I think we should at least be around the average and cost wise. Perhaps the car could have broken down.
Yeah.
But it's a dependent situation, we don't know.
Yeah, they look great.
But uh and we only get twenty five percent anyway, so if we're gonna, you know, we're we're making so much on impound, you know, and between to them, it's a big difference, it's between two fifty seven and one twenty. For us, it's a difference of like forty dollars.
So they they're they're getting two forty four in half, well, it depends on the kind of impound, but for the regular account, they get two point four.
Okay, but we're gonna get those fees regardless of who brings the towing. We're just talking about that. First of all, yeah, so.
I'm pretty sure they just hold a hooky, they just look at the menu, so it's probably just what it is.
Yeah, but we don't wanna shut down, though. Yeah, but if we renew it, we don't have, we have to we have to live with it for a year. Uh I mean, we can offer them a three month deal, maybe we can break them, maybe try to. I guess nobody here from telling them.
City, what is your opinion?
Whenever you're open here, whenever you're willing to stay.
Well, you know, something that two point four, you wouldn't ship down in three months.
I think we just sit him out and try to try to talk to them and renegotiate.
I know where Keith's coming from, because when we work in South Texas, we don't use tow trucks. The officers who work for the P P S will drive the vehicle to the impound. We don't do that in our county, because when we're in Texas, they're able to tow something even more an hour away. So that's that's the difference here, I don't necessarily think that somebody in Orange should do it by different reasons.
I don't, but.
Yeah, so that's my, I don't. Not here. Stay there when you're down there and there's no tow company for an hour, so. And I would drive.
You can often get better rates if you're gonna give them an extended contract. You know, from a career contract, we can lower the rate or extend it to the city. That's usually what they're waiting there if you're nearby, they need for them, so. I'd rather just talk to them or bid it out.
Y'all got y'all got a request, y'all go back to motion, decide what y'all wanna do, or renew or renegotiate.
Yeah, it's your choice.
I made a question, can we offer them a three month extension? And in the meantime, have them come in for renegotiation. If we can't renegotiate, then we'll bid it out.
You need Jesus in your life.
Offer them a three month extension and during that extension, have them come in, try to renegotiate a a long term contract. If for some reason we can't, then we'll bid it out.
Will they put you in church, that you's longer life?
So that's negotiable, if they give us a good deal, we'll give them a longer extension. I mean, for now, pretty much, just so you know, at service. Uh and give them time to negotiate one on one uh on extension. Do you have to make the motion?
Yeah.
A three month extension and to try to renegotiate terms and during that. They were better deal with the city.
Three month extension.
Do you have a motion, you have a second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Close it up, nice habit. Uh uh attend item four, discuss, consider, take possible action regarding the ordinance regulating micro trenching. To provide regulations and specifications for the installation of conduit for fiber optic cable in the city's right of the right of way. So I I'm uh everyone's noticed, obviously their uh spectrum is installed in fiber optic uh uh service for the whole city. Uh and looking at that, there's many issues, obviously with uh there's many issues with uh methods of trenching. We have we've got gas lines, we've got water lines, and so I don't know, uh, I think we can explain, but this is what uh basically regulates the manner in which they can trench in the public right of way.
Yeah, so basically it requires any trenchers or, you know, conduit people coming into the city to come to the city to request a permit and that allows us the chance to A, know what's going on, but also B, potentially give them sign up for some sort of profit sharing or what's the word?
Uh franchise.
Franchise fee. Uh and then we also give money for estimates, and so it's a way to.
We can't charge them for a permit, no.
Okay. Well, they at least have to let us know and it's a chance for us to give up and to.
Depends, this specific project is statutory exempt, but another project may not.
Spectrum specifically we can.
Okay.
So then if they don't get a permit, then it's a five hundred dollar paid fine.
So basically, this is make people who are trenching in the public right of way to come to the city, get a permit, so we know what's going on. And then that gives them opportunity to purchase them for franchise.
What's the next ordinance and they're not in the line?
Right, we have a motion to approve the micro trenching ordinance, you have a second?
Sure.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, have it. Uh the data item number five, discuss, consider, take possible actions to approve purchasing a statue of Captain Bon Army for the city's or for the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of America Project. Uh we talked about this on the last meeting, the meeting before, uh next Fourth of July is the two hundred fiftieth uh birthday of America. We wanted to do something special, uh we put a few folks together. Uh the idea would be to get a statue or at least a bust of Captain Bon Army, since he's the namesake of the town. Uh on there, we could also put maybe a little history of the town, a little history of who he was, maybe the sponsors on it. Uh put it either in the park or maybe in front of city hall, uh and then maybe that could be to future, you know, statue. It was a lot less than I expected, but we got a preliminary quote from the company that did the full body statue at the Resurrection Cemetery. Uh and for a bus, a thirty six inch bus, it was something like five, was it five thousand?
I just heard that eighteen and twenty three.
I'm sorry?
I I know I know what's the eighteen and twenty was, but I.
Yeah, the eighteen inch whatever, I'm sorry. So getting the the largest one, which would be like a four foot bust, uh and the estimate for the marble uh pedestal, uh it's gonna be around twenty thousand. Because I think it's very do, I think we can probably raise all twenty thousand uh pretty easily, especially if you let people put their names on on part of the of the monument. Uh and so what we want approval for today is just to approve that project, to have the committee try to raise the money. But obviously, the money comes up short, two thousand, maybe the city will have to contribute or something. But I think uh we pledge everybody, we can pledge the uh American Legion and the firefighters and the churches. I think we'll pretty easily get to twenty thousand uh for the money from that. Again, that's just preliminary estimate, there's also tariffs coming in and out and all kinds of stuff, so it could be the twenty to twenty five, right? Well, just to be the just to approve the theme, let's hey, we're gonna work our hundred count, we're gonna put water, we're gonna build a monument, so it's in with the America. But yes, we can get it, we can get it. Well, obviously, bring it back, when we get the final estimates, we'll come in and we'll get the, there's there's different size options. You can get as well as eighteen inches or I think as much as forty eight inches on the bronze statue. And then the the marble pedestal, again, is medium size, you know, so there's different options on the sizes. Yeah, we can get eighteen then. Uh.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll take a motion that we approve the project B, we can put up a statue of the Count Bon Army for the two hundred fiftieth.
I I have something to say.
Ah?
I have something to say.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, you know, I did that come, I mean, the county, nothing, but I think maybe we should uh do something now, like help me represent the city with a symmetrical uh symmetrical statue, so you're somebody that people can recognize. I don't think they recognize the people's statue, nobody.
Well, this story can add something to that, we did discuss this before. Memorial for that huge statue.
Oh, what is it?
All the cities, uh, they got their memorial, and we just got just before the government came by, maybe it could be Saturday of the American Legion meeting. We can bring it up.
Well, there's no reason why we couldn't put up two memorials. My thought was we start with one, start with our namesake and then that might be set up a tradition, maybe you can set up uh another one. Uh let's say for veterans, one for, you know, we can't we can't put a thousand monuments, but uh uh like I said, most cities have uh certain ones. Uh the idea here, I think I think this would be well uh received and it's gonna be easy to raise money for. And if we see their expectations, we can simply go out to the second one or say we got it following here. And then say, let's let's plan these out, uh don't want to find out more than we can choose.
That's a lot of bucks for someone to go along with, you know, twenty five thousand.
I've known them, I hope, at least I've known the name, hold on.
What I think is kind of, what I think is kind of nice about this monument is if we didn't have any say on how they named the park, it would have been nice for the council to say, you know what, Bon Army, uh let's let's nominate somebody for this park, but no. The commissioners just took it upon themselves, which was, it's a veteran, you know, and and I I love it, it's a veteran. But it would have been nice to be a part of it. Now with Count Bon Army Commissioners, there's a book, two or three or five books that you could read on our where we began, where we began and what what happened in that that instance, you know?
The motion, there's a motion on the floor, right?
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, you have a motion, you have a second?
We did something.
Okay, okay, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, nice habit.
Excellent.
Alright.
Well, it's a determination.
I'm sorry?
Well, it's like, yeah.
The 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 Count Bon Army is gonna be the subject of the session, and we'll come back later with.
Oh.
Financial proposal.
You already said eight, you already said eight.
Alright, we can reconsider.
It's not just about, it's not.
Make sure if your mom's gonna vote no, I voted aye since two one.
It's not just about veterans, it's about the city.
Well, I thought, well, I I.
It's not about, it's not about.
I think it's a good opportunity for people that are coming here, everyone always has a whose valor, why's that? To talk about who he was, but also who we are, because I think on one side, you can put like who the count was and what he did. He was a he's a national hero in Hungary and he died for basically democracy, he did one monarchy. Uh I think somebody worth honoring, and in the back, we can talk about our community, how we got the name, what we are, uh how we worked out, so it's an opportunity to talk about our namesake and us as a community. Uh I think we could probably get some of the descendants here, uh some of the descendants of Brazil, and they're very excited to hear about. So I think it'd be a great project for the two hundred fiftieth, you know, we're celebrating America, this is our little piece of America. Uh I definitely think the veterans are worth uh certainly worth memorializing and maybe we can, I think some of that's gonna have to be bigger, because there's more, right? We've got, I know we've got Medal of Honor winners from Bon Army, we've got all sorts of folks uh that we could honor, uh and so we can start. You have a problem starting and look at those.
We have people that serve career with with Ron's.
I want to.
Absolutely, yeah. And so it's gonna take a little more time to kind of do the research, you know, we don't wanna, you know, uh.
That's why it should have been named Veterans Park, you know, for all of them.
Well, number. Yes, go there, okay, number six, uh discuss and consider and take possible actions to approve a budget of up to fifteen hundred dollars for phase one of the Texas Heritage Images in the city. This is the uh uh project for the M O U we had approved, this is a Texas heritage project to get uh historical photos of Bon Army and Bon Armyans uh printed, framed, and displayed in the in the in the city hall, the courtroom, and in this building. Uh we met with them, uh this is kind of a basic estimate for about ten photos, I mean, uh private fusion printing and and professionally framed, uh and you know, so that's the idea, so then we have historical photos of the city. Alright, we have a motion, you have a second? Alright, we have a motion, do you have a second? Number six, it's on the second page. The, uh, the historical photo of, of the city hall. We have a motion, do you have a second? Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Here is, number six, discuss and take possible action on public works report detailing activities for August. Time spent on the title. Do you have that in the plan?
They're city maintenance.
Yes.
You know, they have job description.
Yes.
For eight hours a day. What you have to do, each little item they do, I mean, that's a waste of time. How about forty people report?
Yeah.
We can do that. They have, they have, uh, the job description, they didn't, they didn't do it in town.
Uh, for me, it's, it's for, uh, two reasons. One, uh, there's been a lot of, I've heard a lot of concern among the residents about what the public works do.
They don't want access.
So I, I think if we have a, a, a week, a monthly report, like we did with the police department, we can show transparency and accountability, a, and if in fact, uh, so we don't have a misunderstanding. Uh, plus, we need to know with customers. Uh, I don't think it's, I mean, it's one sentence a day. I ask for a weekly, a monthly report, not a daily report, but a daily is fine too. Uh, but especially for transparency and accountability, I think each department needs to report, the court reports, the police department reports, I think public works can report. Plus, there may be things that they need that we're unaware of, uh, and helps us uh, better oversee and, and, and to give the residents answers when they say, well, this public works here. Now I can tell them, day to day, exactly what they're doing. Residents are just living their lives, they don't, they don't see stuff, uh, to be honest, but. Yes.
I, I live around here quite often.
Yes.
You know that.
I used to be able to perform their duties upstairs, and I think if, they're not performing the duties, it's something the city ministry, hiring, 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 if that's necessary.
Hire your HR.
I'm sorry, Anthony, please. I want to speak with your call off.
I don't think it's a requirement to do a report.
Uh?
It's just time, you can wait for time, and they, they have to sit down and, right? You know, I, I can't believe it.
I, I, I can give you an example here, so, uh, respectfully, I disagree, I mean, these are like one sentence, you know. Put a fence on the west and north side of the county, I don't know if I took it. Uh, but that's great, I can tell everybody on that day, that's, that was accomplished. For example, we have one, two days, at least, maybe even five or two, uh, where it says they, they work that part, right? And understand that, that helps us understand that for two days, we have no public works going on because they're assisting.
So we need a plan.
That's what I'm saying, so that, that's why accountability and disclosure is helpful, because I don't have the ability, I, I'm not gonna go and look at every employee every day to see what you're doing, but having a monthly report, where I can see, oh, two days a week, three days a week, we're pulling them to do this, we, we need them to be doing public work, right? So maybe we need to have a plan. Or, uh, if they're spending five days on a fence, well, maybe it was better to contract that next time. Because we can, you know, and so, I think it's essential to have reporting for accountability and for, you know. It's not to say that, I don't think people are doing their work, but we need to know what, what people are doing. Just like with the police department, we know, they're patrolling, and tickets are riding, and foot lanes, all that kind of stuff. Uh, because, well, somebody needs a public one, because we gotta be accountable. When residents follow and say, hey, what's public works doing? There you go.
Well, I see you. Leave on that fence around there. Let me tell you, we, we, I think it, uh, can you estimate that we spend a thousand dollars?
Right, and, and you, you're pointing exactly right, because by looking at these, we can say, look how much money you save. We can look at where we're wasting their time, like having them serving court. Or the opposite, maybe a project where it's.
The city administrators got all that talent, she can make the reports for.
Yeah, but we're the ones that oversee job duties and budgets.
I, another example, we have, no, no, you're correct. Nobody, nobody showed up, okay? In five weeks. So what you report, something that's not an issue.
I know, but for example, we're gonna do the city budget, and if we're blind, we don't know what, what, what they do on a monthly basis, how do we know that we need that position, or we need more of that position?
No, we know we need that position, and prior to the incoming year, it wasn't being done. It took four years to put a flagpole up there.
I, but if you don't, if you don't report it, you don't know.
We should, we should have reported it, damn, we doing our job now.
Nobody's saying that people aren't doing their job, what we're just saying is, we need to report what's going on, so we can make better decisions.
If they don't write here, can't you see that it's big enough?
Sorry, but if you can't write a sentence, it's not, that's not a burden at all.
Well, if you just have a report, and we state that, uh, the maintenance employees followed their job description, they have it up there.
No, that's, no, we need to know what, I need to know what, for example, let's say there was a month where they spent twenty-one days doing one project, right? That's when we know that perhaps maybe we should contract it up, because that means they, they don't have time to do their monthly stuff. Uh, I mean, accountability is essential, we're all staying up.
Why don't we, why don't we just go, why don't we just go with it and, uh, we can work that out?
Try for a few more months to that.
I think I'll make a motion now, and get it over with, instead of waiting, maybe, uh, I make a motion that, uh, no reason to report you, you're monthly reporting.
We have a motion to second, the public works should have no proportion, no transparency, all in favor say aye.
What's he, what's he doing right now? He's on his lunch break or what?
Why is he sitting here? You don't have anything in your way.
Is he on sour?
Motion carries. Alright, next agenda item. Uh, discuss and consider take possible action on, uh, Sarah Barnes to organize the community library and the reading room. So we've got, we had this presented a, a, a meeting or two ago. Uh, Sarah Barnes is the head of the English Department at Southwest. Uh, this is her proposal to take our reading, our library, organize it, uh, spread out the books, and, and get better books, organize it by reading level, right? Yeah. Well, I mean, her job is to organize it, make it, give it some.
The top problem, they're doing a pretty good job with that, they got all the books, they got all the shelves donated.
Fair, absolutely.
And then you wanna bring somebody in here to work on it.
No, no, it's organize it, so that when, like, a parent comes in, they know that, okay, my kid's at a reading level one, these are the reading level one books, they wanna make sure that they have the appropriate, uh, uh.
Do you know this guy?
Uh, Ms. Barnes, I've seen her, I've known her for years. She's at the, at the English Department, Southwest.
What is she, what?
Southwest ISD. It's her and her daughter, they're both teachers.
I don't remember.
You've never heard of Southwest ISD? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't think anyone's still working there. Uh, she's at, she's in middle school, about, uh.
Well, actually, Bon Army Care is, since we've got that free, set up, we've been working on it for two years.
This doesn't take away from Bon Army Care, this is.
There's, it's different squeeze, they don't wanna pay any money. I understand that there's a charge.
Well, absolutely, yeah, yeah, for the, because, again, they teach reading, and the idea is to come in, organize it, and make sure that it's more usable. When the parents come in, they know the, the reading level of their child, and the books are organized by reading level. They, they're also gonna make recommendations on which books they're, and a lot of the books we have are donated. So perhaps we're missing essential type of stuff, and maybe make some recommendations.
Well, maybe she should do that at school if she's a.
Well, she does, but we invited her to come in.
And the, and the Bon Army Care, she take their land, it was twelve hundred dollars, you could buy, uh, laptops or something.
How, how many people have used the, uh, the library?
Not much yet.
Because we don't have the organization, that's the, the purpose is to come in and make it a functional program, and, uh, so that we can have parents come in, just like you, like you do at other libraries, you come in, uh, uh, they have a summer reading list, that's in here, right? And kids can come and get a certificate from the city, I read ten books at my reading level, right? Uh, and, and have it organized, have it, again, you know, some of these things are okay books, but it's not the kind of book that seven-year-olds are gonna wanna check out and read, or how are they gonna know or find out what it is? And so, again, nobody's saying anything negative about Bon Army Care, it's great what they did, but we need, at some point, someone who's a professional educator, teaches people how to read, to come in and say, this is the best way to organize it, and, and the idea was to, to give us some of these little projects, like summer reading lists. Uh, we also have adults that need, uh, that wanna have a, a reading schedule, and that's the idea, is to organize it, uh, make recommendations on how to improve it, and have it conform with what they're doing at Southwest. Or Bon Army Care, if you have any. Working person, by your own. Look what. I think, I think they, they, they've come, they've, they've moved out a couple times. At least once, to look at it and discuss what would be needed, and how would be improved, so, uh, that's already happened, again. I don't know, why are you taking it as something negative on Bon Army Care? We have a motion to table. Well, he made a motion to table, you don't have to second him, we can make another one.
Hey, give it down, a little meeting right now, okay?
Second the motion to table? We have a motion to second to table, all in favor say aye. Put it down as note. Motion to table, carries. Alright, agenda item number eight, uh, nine. Discuss and take, uh, discuss, consider, and take possible action to approve the future land use map and all matters related to it. Ready?
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Sure.
Uh, just touching base on this, I wanna make sure that you guys are, are, uh, fine with presenting, bringing back a full draft. Uh, you know, this, this item, this is necessary in order to be able to implement our zoning. Uh, a future land use plan approved state law is the plan that the city adopts, that zoning, uh, is required to conform to. And, uh, we had a draft map that we developed, uh, previous to, on the previous board, the previous mayor, and so, um, I feel a draft of that. And just kinda wanna make sure that you guys are, uh, ready, ready for that, and, uh, we'll bring that back at the next meeting, and, uh, discuss it, and maybe a work session, um, that might be something as well, might make sense to have a, a work session. So just kind of discuss and talk through that, and find out what young process, what kind of process you want for that.
I buy that, and but we, 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 we discussed zoning for a year.
Well, the, the zoning is approved, it's the future land use map, and, and so usually, uh, a future land use map is something that's done with community input. And so, you know, part of this item, it's just kind of to circle back around with you guys, we had the surveys, and the surveys gave us some information, which was pretty conclusive for the map. Um, and then we've gone through, and we had our town halls. And unfortunately, we didn't have anybody show up to the town halls, but we made a good honest attempt at that. And so, this is really kind of direction for y'all as the decision makers, so if we follow the steps, these are the right steps to go through, uh, for any city to go through before they, they approve the future land use map. And so, we're just giving you an update, saying we've done the surveys, uh, we've done town halls, uh, we have done a draft of the future land use map. And so, uh, I wanna give y'all an update, and just make, get your direction to come back at the next meeting, or if you wanna have a workshop. And we can take one last look at that, uh, future land use map as currently proposed. The citizens can be here to see, and we can talk generally about some of those areas are, where the city wants to have only single family, where the city wants to focus on retail. Um, and then, uh, and then y'all can, y'all can potentially approve at that meeting.
Uh, very much, what's, what's the, what's the purpose of a, of a future land use map, how's it utilized, must be adopted?
Well, the purpose of the future land use map is because it, be frank, it binds the city. It binds you guys, uh, and it also, it's, it's two-part. Um, it is a device that state law provides y'all with, it, it says you may adopt a future land use map. It doesn't require you to adopt a future land use map, but it, uh, gives you the opportunity to adopt a future land use map. And for those of y'all who don't, a future land use map is a complement of a comprehensive master plan. The city has a comprehensive master plan, it's, you know, it was done several years ago. Comprehensive master plans are usually comprehensive documents, they talk about facilities, they talk about, um, future parks, they talk about future capital improvements, they can be, you know, some cities spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on these things. Um, and, but one of the most important elements of a comprehensive plan is a simple map that talks about future land uses. So if we want this area to stay open space, we want this area to be single family, we want this area to be retail. And so you adopt that map, and if you choose to, and typically citizens want a map like that, because, you know, from a citizen, it's seen, it provides a check in the balance, I'll be frank, it provides a check in the balance on the board, not this board, but any board. Maybe some other board comes in and they wanna do special favors for people out of town. If you've got that future land use map, and this community was a part of that, this board needs to make zoning changes consistent with that plan. They can't go and put industrial next to a residential area, right? And so, one part of the purpose of a future land use plan, if you choose to do it, is it requires everybody to stick with this plan, unless you change the plan. And that has its own special process that y'all would potentially be a part of. So, so there's one side, it's kind of frankly, just a check in the balance for citizens, um, on their elected or administrative, uh, officials, or people like me. You pay me to make sure, to give recommendations that are consistent with the plan. Uh, then there's, there's the other side of it too. Cities are always, or developers, frankly, developers, a lot of, there's some good developers, and there's some not great developers. And developers are always looking for excuses, when they don't get what they want, a lot of times they'll sue a city. And guess who makes the final order on whether the city loses or wins? A lot of times it's a judge. And a judge is gonna look at the case and say, alright, city, and developer, like, here's, here's what, this is what the plan was, Mr. Developer. You bought the land knowing the city wanted residential here, but now you're suing the city because they didn't give you your industrial zoning. Sorry, the city had a plan, you should have done your research before you bought the property. And it's your fault, the city's just taking the plan the citizens said they want. So there's, there's multiple levels that protect the citizens, protect them from a fiduciary standpoint. Um, and, and for the good developers that really wanna follow the rules, and wanna go to a community, and they wanna present a project that's consistent with what the community wants, the good developers are gonna look at the plan and go, oh, you know what? I'm an industrial guy, they want residential here. Probably not, probably doesn't make sense for me to, to buy this, I'm gonna go down the road and find another piece of property that makes sense. So there's multiple reasons why the city would do a plan like that. It protects you guys, it protects them, it gives them guidance on how to make decisions, um, which, you know, gives me guidance, which gives everybody guidance, so it's multiple levels, it's a responsible thing to do.
So, so once it's in place, if somebody applies for a, a zoning variance, uh, the city's not able to do that, or they are, but they also have to amend the.
Exactly, they're, what you're speaking to, Mayor, is, you know, different, uh, ways that, we've got a case on here for ultimate decent. Um, you know, and, and, uh, and, you know, Mr. Merrick here. Uh, we have, we have some requests that, that aren't, you know, consistent with zoning. Um, probably wouldn't be consistent with a future land use plan if we had one. Um, and so there's different mechanisms for the city to provide flexibility. Sometimes a project comes in, it doesn't totally meet the, the plan, but it makes sense. And so, uh, it gives the council the ability to be like, alright, well, it doesn't totally meet this, but maybe the use does, it makes sense. But with the case of Mr. Frank, the use is not something the city typically wants, but maybe if he makes the building look great, and he makes the building look like a retail use, it might make sense. Right, and so, uh, it gives the city guidance that they're gonna provide, do a planned development district, which provides flexibility on the use, but still is tough on the development standards. Um, it always is something that helps the city, you know, when it's not an apples to apples thing, it helps the city make decisions, alright, does it largely meet the intent? Um, maybe it's not the use, but it's really superior in this category too. Uh, so, so yeah, it always provides y'all guidance, it's always that starting point to base decisions off of, and see how close does this meet the desires of the citizens and the community.
Okay. You all wanna have a workshop, or you just wanna.
Well, we got sent out, again.
You, you have to send that one in.
State law, chapter two thirteen of the state law just says you need to have a public here.
I, I know you guys work on it before, I was thinking, I wanna look at it, but I can look at it directly, Brandon, if you all wanna have a workshop, and look at it together, whatever you guys. Wanna have a workshop?
And just, and, uh, uh, Christian, uh, so y'all know, the zoning was adopted, zoning and a future land use plan. And just and uh Christian, uh so y'all know the zoning was adopted. Zoning and a future land use plan are totally different things. So the zoning was adopted, so all the work that we did before, that wasn't in vain. We adopted that. It's in place. We protected your citizens. We have zoning. Now, and we decided typically a future land use plan comes first. Future land use plan is the dog, the zoning is the tail, the hog wag is the tail. But we didn't really have a lot of codes in place, so the previous board and mayor decided we need to get some stuff on the books now and protect ourselves. And we'll talk to the citizens, we'll do surveys, we'll do town halls, and if they tell us something opposite of what the zoning is, they say the zoning is too tough. We need to go back and and change that, but stop it, stop the bleed, which is what we did.
Alright, so we have a motion to do a workshop. Want to pick a date now or? Meetings need to be forced September thirty if not after October twenty. Want to do it this month? You have any uh problems this month or? How about Thursday the twenty fifth? Brandon, is that working Thursday the twenty fifth? Uh Thursday, September twenty fifth. Want to hear the day or uh? Alright, we'll move on to agenda item number ten. Uh discuss, take, action, deserve, uh discuss, consider, take possible action to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty five by David O'Malley.
Okay, so the items that we we previously spoke about, but we weren't going to officially deal with within the year. So the animal control donation of twenty five thousand dollars, we need to move it to that line item. And then um the donation to the health insurance, seventy nine hundred dollars, we need to move it to that line item. And then um the March payment to the twenty twenty tax note series, we have fifty four thousand one hundred and forty two dollars. Um on the budget was supposed to come out of the capital improvement fund. Basically got paid out of the capital improvement fund, so it was moved to the general fund. So we need to officially work this out with the.
So we're adding revenue and just moving things to the right account?
For the animal control donation to the health insurance, the the tax note series payment, um it came out of the development area, we said we have a little bit more.
Alright. Do you have a motion to make those amendments to the twenty twenty five? Do you have a second? To to approve that or amendments?
I have orders here for the budget amendments, just because you're creating a budget by orders, you're doing it by orders.
It basically says what Brandon said?
It basically is talking that the new budget has.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do you have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing that, all favors say aye. All of those are down. Nice having you. Uh twelve, is a Barrett sports complex here? Uh I guess we'll go back up to. We did our board permission meeting too, right? Can I, can I open a meeting? Can I uh go into recess and open a meeting to the zoning commissioners and go back to the meeting?
We can, um we can all move with Mike, otherwise we just complete this one and we go to the next one.
Well, it says we have to go through the budget. It's going to take a while to do that. Do you guys want to do the budget now or do you want to uh let these guys present their zoning and then we can go on to budget? That make them wait. Don't mean I'm going to go into recess, uh the bottom of the board commissioners and I'm going to open this meeting of the zoning commissioners and board adjustments to the city of Long Island. The objection will discuss what the implications of the plan believes. Are there any citizens to be heard on the zoning commission? Nobody? Alright, we'll go to uh agenda item one A. Discuss, uh consider a request by ultimate diesel and auto repair for a zone change from C, commercial district, to P, the planned development district. Allow for a motor vehicle repair facility on a block of two thousand acres generally located at one three eighty five interstate thirty five.
So I had the opportunity offline to uh work with Mr. Frank as you all directed. Um he got with uh his engineer and they presented some uh new site plan and some new elevations um to uh consideration. Uh and uh they added brick um and uh that made some other landscaping improvements. Uh however, you know, I get in the opportunity to draw up the plans here tonight to show you guys uh that definitely respect is the work they're doing. Um totally understand that they've got some constraints. Um my my I I have three kind of main areas that I would just advise the board on. Number one, you know, uh as I've discussed, you know, my recommendation is the doors. Um I recommend that those be still be glass, you know, it's got solid doors on it. You know, I'd recommend this be something that looks more like a Christian Brothers Auto Repair that has more of a retail look. My thinking it's still looking pretty enough feel. Not something that you know, think it belongs on a retail corridor. Um I think if those doors were for glass, this would look a lot more uh retail oriented. Um I know he said that you know, these worry things are getting broken into, people can see in, you know, I'd say you know, some surveillance cameras and things might solve that, so. So I'd recommend that the doors be all glass. Um also, just from a from a practical standpoint, you know, we haven't really uh his engineer hasn't indicated where detention is going to go on the site yet. You know, seventy five, eighty percent of the property is in the front lane. Um and so you know, just as a matter of good practice, I'd recommend that his engineers, you know, show where the where the detention is going to go. That way the city is not approving some plan that down the road, you know, people are saying, oh, we didn't know we had to do detention or something. I just want to put that on record. Um I think that engineers specify what the detention is going to be on this, um if detention is needed. And then the last thing is the site plan is showing that the only means of access is going to occur through a piece of property that they don't control. Um so again, from a matter of practice, I wouldn't recommend the board approve any zoning until either that piece of land is a part of this zoning request and that owner consents to it. You know, if I were an owner, I wouldn't appreciate the city uh approving zoning that requires my lands for access. So I think that they either need to, you know, acquire that property or they need to uh add that property to the zoning request and that owner needs to consent to this item. Um or or they need to provide us with some sort of easement or something that they've secured from the owner for access there. Uh so that's kind of proof that this isn't just uh you know, uh just an attempt to get that with me. So those are really my three good concerns. In addition, um just keeping this thing simple, you know, just uh you know, having. Y'all could maybe through the planned development district allow the use, but say all the other development regulations need to comply with the RD one, the R foundation. Uh or you know, because there's not a thirty percent window there, which is what the code requires. Yes, sir.
That property, would it belong to the same owner or different owner?
I don't know. I'm going to let Mr. Frank uh talk about that. You know, I'm just going to present my job as to bridge you guys with the facts and my concerns and let him kind of answer the questions about his project.
It's the same owner as you mean, bro.
Were you, were you able to get an easement or anything?
The the windows is one thing which obviously will look towards our windows what we were found from. We added a light that a little bit more of a facility storefront, obviously looks of the face front, it's a little bit nicer to feel. The second point was the water retention, but it's not notified me that the water retention become later in the report is cautious.
Wait, well, the what I told you, the primary is there access and you probably, because if you don't have access, we can do it for you.
So it works, the windows, the access.
And just to clarify, detention, that's something that's addressed at the construction stage. We still, but we still need number ten go on the site plan because we are adopting a site plan, so. We don't need anybody to design it out and give it a special analysis of numbers.
We went uh we were in the contract yesterday. I'm looking to purchase that property, so ideally I think we'll close in thirty to thirty five days. That's what I've been notified, so.
Which which property? The uh the one in front of you?
Yes, attached to the last third year first and then commercial.
Okay. Well, it's under contract.
There was a personal here between me and the owner because obviously we've been active since last year. And ideally, the benefits of the habit, it obviously is the best and obviously the safest measure, but this happened yesterday, so they had no time on it.
I think, you know, I'd recommend you guys table it and that'll give him time to, you know, provide the authorization. Um and uh and and come back potentially next month with, you know, whatever y'all's feedback is on the design. Um and then and then, you know, y'all will have authorization that you can.
Is it possible to give conditional approval, agree for if you have easement if you want that?
In your, in your, in your capacity as a planning commission, you can absolutely do that. I would just recommend like say, say if y'all agree, because this still needs to be approved by y'all as the board. So in your, in your capacity as a planning commission, y'all can totally do that. Um and then and then provide the authorization prior to the city council meeting.
I just said we got to give him some direction, like like there's still maybe outstanding issues, but I think we need to let him know whether we can get to a yes or we don't want it. I don't want him to keep spending money and buying stuff and then we just turn it down, right? But at some point, I think we, I think we need to listen to our, you know, our planner and say, okay, we may need some adjustments, but I'd like to say, let the guy know we're going to let him do it. If he follows whatever that or not. If you're dead set against it, we need to let him know that. So this brown side, you said is a brick?
Um the bottom will be new brick and up top either we'll do brick or we'll do a two tone steel, like a dark brown, light brown or a dark blue, light blue to offset.
So the bricks is bottom part?
Yes, I can add brick along the top. Um again, it's just the budget and I'll purchase you separate copper being.
Okay.
That's up the top. I thought it was all brick.
It it might be, it just feel God was very vague with me, but I mean, we accumulated. We purchased the building at a great rate and it's paid and it's on in route. Obviously, that's nothing to y'all, but the fact that we got it at a great rate. Forty fifty percent under, that only gives more funds, so here we go. I don't mind, like he said, hey, friend, this is the one we agreed to. Down the road, you have the ability to say this was the one we agreed to, so no. But I mean, I'm I'm willing to comply and you can see this.
If y'all want it all brick, you have to make it that. State law doesn't give, you know, our our state legislatures in Austin took away cities ability to apply design or yeah, to allow cities and regular materials through their standard codes. But through planned development districts like this, y'all do have the ability to ask for it. I've been advised by T M L Scott Houston, y'all do have the ability to do it through a PD. So uh so today, you know, again, my recommendation is as a city planner, my reg, I'm all about mixed use and and allowing flexibility in use. Cities do it all over time. My recommendation is always get the bones right, get the building right. And 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 so my recommendation is I require all brick. I require, the code requires seventy percent transparency, like seventy percent windows and glazing on your fronts. So that's why I'm recommending the glass. Um that way when people drive past the same.
It looks like a retail, it looks like it'd be a furniture mattress warehouse or something. I guess it's very low people see.
They're going to give you a plan and sell it to us to approve it and if we don't want all of it to be brick, it doesn't have to be brick. Hey, um you guys pay me to give you advice. So and so that's that's why I'm here and so if you guys, I come here to give you my recommendation and and it's y'all's job to say, hey, we like Brandon's recommendation or hey, Brandon, you're going too far, so I totally respect that. Yes, sir.
You're going to imagine y'all's building next door doesn't look that, you know, greatly created or downgraded. Neither does Battle Snake Transmission. I mean, we're trying to accommodate and add, but you know.
Back package. So so Brandon, so your recommendation was uh complying with RD, which is what?
My recommendation is to comply with uh because right now the property is zone C. Um and in our new zoning code, C doesn't allow for it and so he needs some kind of zone change. And I'm, I don't recommend, number one, the RD one is the zone, oh, I'm sorry, the RD two is the zoning that we designed for the I thirty five corridor, which is in sixteen oh four, which is a retail based kind of zone. That has higher quality design standards and the RD one zoning, just as a street zoning, does not allow for this. And so that's why we're having to do it.
It doesn't allow for the use.
It doesn't allow for the use.
You're saying make the building standard the same and to give him a a variance on the use. That way, if it's ever repurposed, it fits into our plan.
Exactly. You can have a, you can have a rooms to go that would maybe want to go in there because it's a good looking brick building with glass doors and.
Now, when it comes to glass, does it have to be transparent or could it be frosted glass or something like that? So then if it's a E ten, they can walk it out.
Vinyl wraps. They can vinyl wrap the door and I can basically make it look like a hangar, like an airport hangar. I can make it look like windows. I can make it look like a dump truck.
They can take it frosted. That's totally fine. The the key is like I always say, the key, my recommendation on these things is get the bones right. Get some glass windows. That way, if somebody else comes in, they can take the frosting off.
Is your safety issue the fact that people can see in or the fact that people can break glass?
Oh, so I have all of your vehicles in there and they all get broken into because they see high dollar vehicles. That's my responsibility. Of course, I'm insured, but I don't see how it's feasible. I tell my customers, it's your fault for bringing it to me. It's your, it's my fault for using the windows. It's like putting it on display to people and especially after hours during the day, they're going to be open. So it's going to be, you know, operations.
He has a contract. He has a contract with Wyatt.
Well, Tech Stop already gave them approval to have it, to have a draft. So so he has the Tech Stop approval. He just needed the land. So then he's got, he's buying it.
Yes, I'm buying the land. So we spoke yesterday, we wrote the contract and thirty to thirty five days, it should be mine. So I'm hoping by then, the next meeting, we address something else. I mean, we can work on something in between now, me and Brandon and development or whatever we need to do.
So this isn't signed. Have they signed the contract?
Uh I signed it and sent it. They submitted. My realtor's imperative is in there. She's the one that submitted it all. I spoke with the brokers and ideally, we're just waiting on the appraisal, which is two weeks out. And after that, the bank and everybody's good and. Lee Meekum, I've spoken and he's out of California and he's a right gentleman, but like he said, the benefit is you to have it, Frank, they need to sell it to you because. I'll tell you how certain the deal is. He has made the deal with his broker where they want X amount, but if they sell it to Ty, people, he's going to get a foreign admission. You can see on all these clear readings, I think that one.
Well, I think we should. I I I think I like Brandon to compromise, which is we allow him to have the use. He's already invested a lot, but we conform to the RD one style that has him right our core board. We don't have in twenty years, buildings are all the same in one hot ball one. I think if he, he sounds like he's willing to do that, uh and I'd like to give conditional approval. Uh provide that you have an easement, provide that he can perform with the RD two, line standard, and we give him permission to use it.
Let me double check that part.
I'm pretty sure it is. I'm pretty sure it is.
Auto eight to eleven, nickel.
So after, depending on the conditions or no conditions, y'all place on it today, y'all can condition it, prove it to the board to, to the commissioners, the council, to, to define the approval next time. So the big changes or requirements you wanna impose, you have to do today.
Take a recess. Take a two minute recess. One fifty, we'll be back at one thirty-five.
What are you doing, are you good?
Are you good?
Oh, the matter, I'm not gonna go back in here.
I just wanna see that. Good man? Uh, yeah. Uh, we had a session over five minutes. Uh, yeah, I called, we were, I was trying to fill that. Yeah, it has to have a sirens, I don't think, they're, they're gonna get a sirens. Does anything, is that?
Okay.
Yeah, boy, boy, I think something, I mean, that's what, that's not. I have something to offer. I've got one minute. Um, yeah, I go, I go once, I go once, my sister goes once, you save it again. Sometimes it's, it's, it's not one month. At one fifty-five, we'll resume our meeting of the zoning commission, we want adjustments for the city of our army. Uh, I called Mr. Meekum to confirm, he hasn't signed it, he said yes, he's selling the property, uh, so I'll tell him, so I can confirm with the owner, so. There's no further discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion, and we go with Brandon's proposal that we approve, uh, condition on.
Is it R D one or?
R D two. R D two. Condition that we still leave R D two, what do you mean, about the design standards?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, yeah, and that the, uh, purchase or acquisition easement that is completed, that we give approvals to change the use and use of purpose.
And if I may, Mayor, you know, the, the wording of it would be, um, to approve the P D D, subject to a base zoning of R D one. Um, and all of the uses and development standards that are allowed in the R D one, however, except, I mean, R D two, R D two. Subject to a base zoning of R D two, and all of the uses and development standards that are required within the R D two, except that he may have automotive repair. Um, for, for, for trucks, for diesel truck repair, um, and that would be it. And then everything else, all their regular standards and zoning codes would apply, such as outside storage, you can't have outside storage, everything he's working on has to go inside at the end of the day. Uh, no parts, nothing stored outside, um, basically all the standards that retail has to provide.
Um, on that sub note, are we on an understanding that it don't have to be glass doors, exactly, glass seat?
It would, it would have to be glass doors, but you could frost them, that's fine, but you would have to install glass doors, it has to be transparent, you can't do solid wood or solid metal doors. It would have to be the iron glass doors.
Is there any way the board can make a decision on what they feel pretends for that, I know the zoning is one, and like he said, the recommendations are his, ultimately.
Well, the issue I have is that I wanna make sure that when we go down the road, where the building is repurposed, or that it's, in its performance with the design standards, or maybe everybody follow. Is it possible for them to have, like, window framing, and they put, that way, when it, if it, if it, the use is changed, then the glass will put in, or?
You can't, you can't change it, and that's, that's the thing, Mayor, you're, you're saying that, you know, I respect that he's asking for it, but what you're doing is you're setting a precedent to everybody else that comes in to develop. That the seventy percent transparency is not required, so the next thing that's gonna happen is some other retailer's gonna come in, and they're gonna point the building sideways, and you're gonna get a big brick wall. So what you're doing is, even though it's a P D, you're setting the precedent, and you're kind of neutering that requirement, which is a retail requirement, so I don't think anybody will do it, but.
You said that there's other shops you point to, that do have seventy percent, right?
Yes.
It's doable.
It is, it, it's absolutely doable with retail, you know, that's, that's the thing, is in retail corridor, you know, that's.
Set. I think it's more so doable in other automotive shops, but on a smaller scale, those roll-up doors are twelve, ten foot high. We're eighteen foot doors, so that's a whole different door, that's why we can vinyl wrap in it, to give it some sort of look or appeal. Because an eighteen foot roll-up door, compared to a ten foot glass roll-up door, there's a big difference in price increment, if they even make a window roll-up door that big, you know.
Could it, could it be like, the top part is glass, and not the?
Again, it's totally up to you guys, my, in my opinion, you guys are already providing him with enormous amount of flexibility, just letting him have a diesel truck repair facility on your retail corridor period. So, you know, asking for at least what not is gonna have a glass door, is, you know.
What, 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 we could, I, I, we could improve it the way Brandon's recommending, uh, you can always be brought to us as a variance request and say, this is the door I'm gonna buy.
Exactly.
Specifically, so we're not giving you this or that, and we take a bigger than I, right, you get an estimate.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right, y'all could, you can still give him, if he brought in the door that he wanted, y'all can still give him flexibility down there.
I'm gonna make a motion to proceed with what he had, now.
Well, we have, we already have a motion on the floor, which does that.
Okay.
The motion on the floor already does that, it just requires him to make it the same design standard we have.
But you still have to work in this too, so.
Well, I think he's trying to say this, he's, he's okay with the way it looks.
Is there any phone, say that?
You guys can say whatever you want to.
Okay.
While, while we have a motion on the floor, so.
Motion to accept that.
No, we, we had a motion to approve the use with R D two, like, design standards. Condition on the fact that he gets, uh, he closes on the, uh, on the easement.
I think the question on that motion is, obviously with the easement, but with the way the building looks now, and all the doors.
Well, but we, we can't do that, because then we can't make anybody else applaud that, if, if we do that, then, then everybody looks that, we can't do that.
I think so, so that has to be started.
Well, but, so, so yes, but if we're able to bring you an example and say, I can do this, I can do this, and which one do you like, and then you can still let him do it, like, it's still, it's still allows the project to move forward. Without giving up our zoning standard.
So can the project move forward with my motion?
Well.
And, wow.
So, so Mayor, or, or remember, there's a lot of pieces that take place in development, so the first step in a situation like this is getting your zone. Getting your zoning does allow multiple building permits, so once he gets the zoning, then he has the assurance that he needs to start spending money on plating, so he needs to plating. And then, in the plating process, he needs to start to develop construction plans, he needs to, so it'll still be several months until he gets.
No, the, the motion that's on the table allows him to move forward, and, and allows him to bring us an alternative to what, uh, to kind of get somewhere in between. But, and, and like Valerie said, it protects our, our zoning that we spend all our time on. Well, 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 we have a motion on the floor to, to do, the, the city planners, which allows him to move forward.
Who made the motion?
I, okay, well, second.
Yeah, but you, you're gonna throw out our entire zone, are you?
Wait, no, he can. We don't have a, so are you, you talking?
So that's how it works, we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, and let's move forward, uh, and we also, it also has the condition, we actually have a easement, so we can get to the road. Uh, and all you have to do is follow the R D two design standards.
Second.
So you made that motion, and then you're refusing to second that motion before it actions?
I'm, I'm on motion to stand, please, all right. We gotta move forward, we need to.
Hold it, that's what.
And this moves it forward, this moves it forward. This moves it forward.
And protects our design standard.
Yeah.
We can discuss, we can, we can make the second, we can discuss and explain how it, but that's what it does, it moves it forward, protects our design standard, that's all. Yeah, I agree, that's what I want, that's what I was saying, we need to get him a decision today, this does that, so he can move forward, he can do, he can build his thing, uh, but it has to conform to our, our standards.
So.
Everybody on it, forty-five.
Are you gonna second it?
Second one, or?
No, I'm not saying.
The, the, the standing vote, the standing vote.
Okay, your motion's second, we can put to discussion. Here, then, upstairs, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So it can move forward.
Um, on that sub note, are we gonna be able to move forward with plating or anything else, where we can get funds allocated now, hey, God, we need this, this, and this? That way the next meeting, I don't come in with nothing.
Well, the next, sorry.
When we. So the next meeting is when we would approve the ordinance to give you that planned development issue, this is the zoning board, then it has to go to the board commissioners, so that's the second part to it.
Okay.
So this is your.
He, he needs that second vote to move forward, right?
He needs to, he, we need to have the ordinance in place, yes.
Can we do that?
You have to do a, a, a workshop, a river workshop, you'll just say.
We, we need. I think state law says, I think state law says, uh, thirty days from the planning zoning commission, it's a crazy law for general law, you've gotta wait thirty days from the date that the P N Z takes action. You've gotta send up, unfortunately, it's just.
So as soon as we can do it, is October eleventh?
Exactly.
That's state law, on, on the facet, actually.
October eleventh to.
As soon as we can vote on it.
To update the doors.
No, no, finalize it, we just vote on it, we have to vote on it twice.
Okay, okay.
So we vote up, I'm sure the next vote will be very similar, but we have, they say we have to wait thirty days, and we can't do anything.
From here to those thirty days, is there anything in between that I can be working on?
I, you know, it's.
But you can prepare your plating application, but you take the rest, it's the same three people voting, I can't guarantee what's gonna happen, but it's gonna be very similar. But yeah, you can get that ready, so that before you approve it at the next meeting, you can file your plating the next day.
Is that something that we can interchange and exchange with the next thirty days, if I can get the God over this?
Yeah, again, it's, you're, you're, you're spending money at risk, you know, I, I wouldn't recommend, most people, I'm not gonna tell you, this is your business, but most people don't start expending money on engineers. Until they know that they have the final approval of their zone, because if for some reason something happens, and, you know, and any board denies you, your project doesn't happen, and you still have to pay the engineer.
I've already paid the engineer out of pocket just to get to this level, and everything else out of pocket, so I deal with it.
Yes, it's up to you, yeah.
What we.
Yeah, we just, we can't accept a new construction casing until the final zoning issue.
Okay, so we'll quickly be able to present not only the secondary vote in thirty days, but all of the information, or eighth analysis, or forty year list, we have sent. Plating, retention, drainage analysis.
Yeah, we can't accept it from you until the zoning is approved.
Right, so what, what if that's what y'all prove, but can I present it then, and y'all say, hey, or is that gonna happen, you have to separate me.
Well, no, you can turn it in, but it's still a skipper review, and the review can't start until after zoning.
That's what I'm curious on, if I can say those thirty days, you'll do something with it or not.
Could you start it on?
Yeah, we just can't make you any promises, so it's a drum race.
What I can say is if, if, if the board's minimal, I'm gonna vote and call a couple meetings, get things approved, so you're not waiting every thirty days to get something. But on this one, if we have a statutory, we have to wait thirty days, I can't do that, but if on the next meeting we get approved, and we need a couple meetings in three or four days, just for your interest, I don't mind getting that.
I think this, that will be administratively approved, so I think once he gets his final zone, everything else is just administrated, you don't need to come back here unless he decides he wants to get a variance for the door or just. He has to come back, but, you know, if he just decided to found some pillar glass doors that are on sale.
So, so if he wins, if he, if he gets approved at the next vote, that's it, that's, it's all.
Yeah, then it just goes to your building, client review, and all that with the inspectors.
So at that point, we would have to agree, okay, this conforms to the R D, R D two, based on the doors, so then they vote on it, and then to the next plating and stuff from there.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and building permits, and it's just.
Yeah.
How long would the process be after that, assuming?
That's, it's, it's all the inspectors, and what you submit, and.
C O O and all that.
Then there's always.
And, and engineering.
There's always something, there's always issues with engineering documents, our city engineer's gonna review it, and she'll find some things wrong, and it's, it's always, you know, at least sixty days or so from the time you submit engineering documents.
Three, four months, and just in general, because in case the lender or somebody asks me the status of the project, something I can reference, I know already.
I, I can't give you a turn very much.
Okay, what about?
Like I tell you, you know, I would ask the staff to expedite this, we're not sitting on anything.
What about, what about solids, how soon would they be?
Have known you.
That's, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's out of our, not standing time.
Um, sounds good, I feel the, is there gonna be an issue, because I plan to platter this front lot, and just use the easement for the business, eventually I might sell it or store it up for something else. Assuming, obviously not mine, but that way I can make capital off of that, but is there something we, we can talk about on the soft line?
Yeah.
That's, that's a great idea. All right, move on to agenda item one B, consider request by Alco Enterprises L L C for a zoning change from C Commercial District, to the, to C Commercial District, with specific use permits, allow food processing on approximately two point two acres. Generally located at one three nine nine four, I eight thirty-five seven.
Yeah, recommend the same thing, same drill as last time, uh, I recommend, uh, actually I'll back up. He's basically asking, he has the same situation as Mr. Frank does, except, uh, we, through, you know, working with the city attorney. Except, uh, we, through, you know, working with the city attorney and really looking at some of the past action on this. We determined that the safest course of action for the city was to consider, um, invested uh, in the previous zoning code. And what I mean investing, I don't mean like his, he has permission for his project. What I mean is the procedures of the previous zoning code. So if he were totally coming in under the new zoning code, he'd have to be asking for a P V just like Mr. Frank. But since he's in the old zoning code, the old zoning code said he needed a specific use permit. It's pretty much the same exact thing. The only thing with the specific use permit is, is that you don't have the ability to provide variances on certain things. Um, S U P is just all you get is that additional use. And so still, whatever the base zoning district is, um, you have to fall into that. This one's a little bit more complicated because we don't have the RD one that potentially applies the base zoning. We just have the C. So we are gonna have to potentially put some more guidelines on this one. If, if your goal is to provide him with the same fairness and level of quality that you just required from Mr. Frank. It's easy. We just say RD one and we've already have ready to go regulations. But he doesn't have that because it's, it's the C. Um, and so my recommendation, or keep saying RD one, RD two. Uh, so my recommendation is to, uh, with the approval of the S U P, you guys can condition that, say, we approved the S U P, uh, subject to this and this, and subject to the development, design, development, landscaping, building appearance facade standards of the RD two. So you can just simply apply that. So that'd be my recommendation on this. Um, again, it, it's a, it's a building that's headed in the right direction, I think, in terms of appearance. My two recommendations on this are, um, require the landscaping and building and design, all the development standards of the RD P district. Um, and also, uh, require him to, uh, better allocate the site, which he started doing, and only develop half of it. That way he reserves a whole other half for some other retail use. So again, on this, if you require a good looking building that has the potential to be retail, that could be a retail building at one point. And then preserve the other half of the property for an actual other user where the owner could potentially sell that off and put in a Krispy Kreme or something one day or something like that. So those, that's my recommendation on this.
So we've been working on this design for a while. Giving all ideas to, to the city, most of the random. And finally, we got to the point that we were getting too far and the owner said, listen. Sorry, but this is the, this is what I wanna build. This is what it is, my business. This is not only, this is not only that, uh, how it looks, where it's located, but he said, all this workflow, everything is, is related to it. So that's why they're building from the beginning of the design. We tried to mess with this to make it nicer, prettier, and that's, that's what the, the la- last version is. But, uh, but I wanna ask you to give the building to the same place. Make it beautiful, but work in better landscape, it is no problem. The glass, so actually the glass is already, uh, I guess, accommodated there. So there'll be no problem. So we, we wanna make it nice. And anything that, that needs, that, that needs, uh, needs to be done to make it nice and pretty, we are going. The only thing is, last time we were talking about moving this building all the way to the back. That's, that's, that's the making. So the reason is because when, when you look at this picture, actually it shows phase one and phase two. The phase two is that on the second page, it shows the second building that is supposed to go in the future behind it. So we, we.
What's the second building?
Same thing. Same thing. They just want to have the, the whole left quarters and then they want to have all this, uh, this business, uh, moved here. So at this moment, we, we are trying for half of this. Uh, this, this is the reason why we can't move this building all the way to the back.
And this is the, the.
This, this is the.
Base five thirty five?
Right.
So, so if I could sum up, you're, you're basically saying you're fine with the RD two design standards. You just wanna have the figure to locate where you want to grow it up.
You know, I, I'm not coming. I said, okay. Look, we, we have to come in and try to put the little building. And, uh, but now that I'm there, and he said we should move the building back. But what should he move the building back? It's his property.
I agree, I have a suggestion. He says it's not feasible, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm willing to say, we tried, we tried, we, we've had this idea, we tried. We, we, I mean, of course, the last decision is who's gonna be paying for it.
So, yeah, so it's. I think if we're compromising, if we're willing to do the RD two design like everyone else on thirty five, right? I think, I think we can compromise on that.
So you have something like that, with spices.
Yeah.
Okay, the guy's gotta be checking on cup with spices and stuff. We want somebody like that. Of course, the owner is next up. Okay, I think so. Cause he, he's got some warnings.
Yes, he's got some more, and as a matter of fact, I met him yesterday and he said he's got some, some more plans. He just want to go through, he said he's got some more plans, how to develop the rest of the land, the land behind, and the land on the side. But, uh, I have a feeling that he wants to use this property because he's, he's getting it only for a very, very long time. And one year he wants to do it, and next year, okay, maybe not. Because we've been, we've been there, uh, Brandon knows that. We've been there already a couple of years ago and he was, he was saying, let's do it. And then something happened and stopped. Now, when I told him, maybe we can do it, but something else, he said, I don't know. For last month, I'm basically waiting, I'm not doing anything. So at this point, uh, I, I have a feeling that he wants to invest some more and you're probably gonna see more. How to build the rest of the property. But, uh, we'll have to start with.
So Brandon, how would we phrase the motion if we're going to require RD two, allow them to, you know, locate the building where they want?
I would, uh, phrase the motion to, uh, approve, recommend to the board approval of a specific use permit allowing food processing within the C district subject to all of the development, all of the standard development requirements of the RD two district um, within the city's U D C. Um, and, uh, to, and also with the additional motion that prior to city council, they provide a revised site plan that, that shows the design of the site designed in a way that preserves the eastern half of the property. That's what I, I recognize.
Okay, but I basically put what we, what we put in place to do it. So I, I don't know if there will be no changes. It's basically what we have, this is what we, what we would like to do. So I don't see any point to having another site than a group. I think it's already in the city with a site, with a plan, set of plans ready for the permit. Is there a reason why they need to put a new site plan?
Uh, the way I saw it, it looks like there's kind of a unusual projection coming out of the building. And I, I know it sounds, but this is, this is design, this is what S U Ps are supposed to be for, is to facilitate this. So, um, you have your building, which is generally, generally pretty linear. So you've got, uh, you've got the building here. Um, and they're using up the whole entire site. So there, it makes sense. So what you wanna do is, you know, when I say reconfigure the site to preserve half the site, changes that are gonna need to be made, is this gonna, is this gonna need to be put somewhere else? Um, RD two, this is an old version. Brandon, this is the version you only want?
This, this is the version that, that fifty one.
Okay, so, so yeah, this, this whole thing is gonna have to change now. That, this is gonna have to be moved to the back.
And so, so we, we. We were talking about allowing them to locate where they want. Like, well, the RD two.
It can't allow it.
Well, well, the, the RD two wouldn't allow this site plan. I guess that's what I'm saying. The, the RD two.
They can't even allow it.
We do need to specify and, and so if, if, so what I would recommend is if, if you like this site plan, the way.
But I like it, and they've already, they've already made all these plans.
Well, it's not about them making plans, it's about you protecting the citizens of your city and protecting your design standards. So if you care about the design standards, it's your job to require them and not give, um, you know, he's, it's their job to, to, to create plans that comply with the regulations that you want for your city. Right? And so, so we've been working with him. So if you want to adopt, if you wanna give him approval, subject to the requirements of the zoning code that you and, and we all worked so hard to do, then he's gonna have to make some changes to this.
But it'll allow him to use it and allow him to place it where he wants, provided that RD, that he complies with.
Yeah.
Not what I wanted. Just, 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 this, this is the first plan. This is, uh, this is the plan that was actually submitted ten years ago, but never got completed. So nothing could change. The, the owner says, this, this is what, uh, this is what it works for. To preserve them, the second part, then, yeah, this is a parking. To later on, this parking can be changed.
It's plenty, yeah, there's gonna also be a construction in this, in this area.
So my recommendation would be, again, if, if you approve a plan that requires the use of the right side of the property for parking or any of the things that are necessary for this development, you're probably not gonna get the right side. If, if you, cause right now, everything happens on the side. And nothing's happening in the back. And so my guess would be, nothing's ever gonna happen over here. But if you require him to put his loading in the back and to put the parking in the back, what you're creating is the bones, as I always say, giving the bones, right? The bones for preserving this piece of property. Okay, and so, in, in, you know, this is, this would not comply with the RD two if they came in.
So RD two requires the storefront to be towards the highway and parking area in the back.
Yeah, ju- just like, the RD two is a retail district and retail districts always require loading in the back. When you drive past the Best Buy or H E B, they don't have the loading in front. They have it in the back, so you can't see it, cause that's not attractive for retail. It's not nice for a retail quarter. So, uh, so again, if, if the priority for you, Commissioner Martinez, is sticking to your regulations, then I would say it's okay for you to ask him to do other things. If you like this the way it's presented and you think this is reasonable and I'm asking for too much, and that's one thing. But if, if your goal is to stick to the regulations we've worked hard to create, it is respectable and justifiable to ask him to make changes.
So what do they want?
Well, I would say it's your job to tell them what the city wants. Just because they've worked hard at something doesn't mean you owe them anything. You owe them, you owe them the right of equally applying your laws to them, the same way you just applied to Mr. Frank.
And what's gonna happen here, we're gonna lose that. I can see it coming. He's not another one to change all that.
So the regulations, those are gonna help. I think, I think we're giving them variance by allowing the use. And just like we did with Wolfen Diesel, they decide to conform with the design standards. And then, and it's, it's been packed on with what you see as you go down the road. If everyone gets variance, and we don't have any designs, we might as well get rid of the zone. Well, I think here's the problem. These are the two parts of right that grand father. Everyone else is gonna come to us, it's gonna have to comply with it. So all we're doing is making sure that we don't have an anomaly. Huh?
And we can do what, what we have to do. You don't want the, the people not coming here.
Well, we, we, what we had decided to do was make I thirty five a retail quarter. And this isn't a retail use. So there's no need to help us as our, as far as our city plan. Uh, but they've been here before, they, they're grandfathered in, and so all we're saying is, go ahead and do your, you know, we could say, can't do it, but we're saying you can do it. Make it look like the rest of the building, correct, that we're requiring on I thirty five, that's it. And that just means they have to reorient it because the storefront has to be full. It's like this other building, if it ever needs repurposed, then, then it will comply with our design standards in the future. Twenty years, ten years.
Commissioner Martinez, if I may, the regulations that you have in place right now, they're intended to create nice buildings for your grandchildren. Okay, forty years, thirty years, your grandchildren, you're gonna have an I thirty five quarter. And the question I recommend, I would propose, the question is not so much how much have these people worked on this? And what do they deserve and what do they want right now? The question is, is what kind of I thirty five quarter do you want for your grandkids? You want a quarter that looks nice or you want a quarter that looks like San Antonio? And that's, and that's your decision. So I would recommend making it based on whether you think it's a good looking decision. Make the decision based on whether or not you think it's a good looking building. Not just, but not because they've done a lot of work on it, they deserve it. Uh, uh, that's what I would recommend, if that makes sense. So your boss, stay here, you better put that back.
Uh, no, I, I, the front of the building, I can make it look, you know, where's the doorway come? I can put some more glass, I can put the redesign in front of it. And it's gonna look, from the front, it's gonna look perfectly like it's a, uh, retail. And later on, no problem. We can, we can take a piece of glass to the door and then create some spaces for retail. So this building can be repaired later on. We're not gonna leave a blank, uh, wall on it. It's gonna look ugly and, and nothing you can do with it later. No, we can propose it. We can propose some warnings, we can propose some nice lighting and a big sign in the front. The only thing is.
What about the loading in the front?
That's it, that's it. This is the building. Number one, on the back, the face tool is done. Number two, those, those trucks, they have to come in, back up and, 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 and go. So this is the whole operation they have. This is how, you know, if somebody get used to, they know how they, how they run the business. And you tell them, no, you could do it the other way, everything falls apart. And that's what they, they are explaining. It's like, listen, this is how we do the business, this is how it works, this is not the first building that we have. Either we're gonna do it, or it's gonna work for them. Because of the workflow, before the loading and unloading, because whatever they're running, I'm not an expert what it is. But basically, uh, that's what I gathered from him. We work, it's not about working hard. It's a, it's a, it's a matter of finding compromise. If the building looks ugly, I can, I can still improve it. But I can't put it to the bed or make it, or make a, uh, make a dark load on the bed. That's fine. And later on, that's fantastic. If, if, if this falls apart, the dark is only a piece of the roll out doors, four roll out doors. They can always close it and they, they can open nice fronts for the retail, if not the max. And if there's somebody later in the future wants to build something nice though, there's gonna be no hard foundation there, just the parking. They can, they can, they can use this parking to build something else. So this, this building will have the potential to be retail with duty with this design.
Why retail because of taxes?
Right, because this isn't retail. You're given an exception, then we're not getting retail. But if you need R, R, R two design, then they have to design it for future retail. Uh, and I don't mind giving them the variance, even though it's not retail. Uh, I just think you just have to, you need to have, stick with our common design standards.
No variance.
Oh, you made a motion that.
We all need to work together.
Brandon, if, if we approve the motion the way you phrased it, uh, it's not to reback the design plan, right? If we wanted to approve a variance on the location, we could do that at that point, right?
Exactly. Specific use permits always require a site plan. And, you know, in thirty days when you come back, you know, if y'all wanna have more discussion about, you know, kind of chipping away at the RD two and giving modifications or variances or whatever you call it, y'all can absolutely have that conversation. As long as you've gotten the recommendation as to P and Z, you can keep on working there.
Absolutely. Yeah, so it sounds like they wanna keep it that orientation. Do they keep it that orientation? Is there anything else on this building that we really need to change for RD two? You talked about like a false interior facade, would we require an actual working one?
Uh, you know, right now, unless you put that in the motion, cause the way, the RD two is your base set of requirements. The RD two does not allow the way it's currently configured. And so if, if the majority wants to recommend approval of the specific use permit as presented, um, I, I think the recommendation would be, recommend approval of the S U P. um I I think the recommendation would be recommend approval of the SGP. Uh su- subjects allowing for food processing in the food industry. Um and actually, this is an SGP, y'all can't do that. Um well, subject to the RT two, except, yeah, that's right, there's so many issues. A pre-recommended approval of the SGP, subject to or allowing food processing and subject to the RT two standards for design and development, except where the RT two design and development standards conflict with the site plan. The site plan shall prevail, except in no way do they get any kind of variance from the C, which is the base zone. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. There you go, that's it right there. They they they're horrible, because we're establishing the RT two on top of it. That's an extra set of design rules.
So it's staying in RT two.
Yeah, because you could take from the RT two, but the RT two is something you're adding anyway, because you can only add with the mission team. But you can't give a variance for the C, which is the base zone. So so there you go.
Make that motion.
I'll make that law some crack away.
One second. All right, one last question. All clear to say hi?
Hi.
Let's say hi, David. Uh I thought it was your back end.
Well, we'll talk offline, how about that?
We'll call it an off. That's that's the end of the slide. You got additional approval, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh that's it. So uh draw a motion to adjourn the meeting of the zoning commissioners and board of adjustments and resume the board of commissioners. One more question? One second. All clear to say hi? Hi, means adjournment at two thirty two P M. Uh it's now two thirty two P M, so I'm gonna resume the uh regular meeting of the board of commissioners of the city of the RT. Uh we're back on agenda item two. We have two twos on the agenda, but it's the first one, let me see. Uh discuss, consider, take possible actions to adopt for fiscal year uh twenty twenty six budget. We have the proposed budget in the uh we start by, I know you said there's a timeline, I think, when we got to approve stuff. Maybe reminders of that.
Well, officially, we have to have it approved by the twenty ninth, for the tax rate and the budget. So the tax rate, we had the last meeting, you know, in motion to the tax tax rate and that today, but we can't, because it has to be thirty days after the budget is filed, which won't be into the twenty ninth. So we have to have a meeting on the twenty ninth to approve the tax rate.
Okay.
And the tax rate cannot be your proposed tax rate. Your proposed tax rate was to say the staying at point one four three seven. We can't do that if we run your state law, so we have to do the revenue revenue, no revenue rate, which is zero point one three zero eight five, I think. Um and so.
What's the voter approval rate?
The voter approval rate is point two three seven. We're waiting on the voter approval rate. Oh, but actually, the average household's taxes will drop from two eighty one a year to two two four a year.
On the back, right? But that's not what we did today, all we have to do is set the.
And the and the taxes. Well, it's correct, but it is part of the budget. And so in the budget, the the Apple on tax strictly pays for the building payments and part of the police parking that doesn't cover all the debt. It just covers the the taxman series and then it's part of the uh control parking. Everything else is self-taxy, but if not.
Oh, uh what's our, what's the total budget? This is the proposed budget.
Well, it just, what it's one point nine, that includes closing the closing the street maintenance fund. And then in that budget, the street maintenance fund, that was closed, it has to go into the non fund. But then it will be sent to the federal improvement fund to pay for the services. Because we have to have the senior foot, well, it's a different topic.
So wh- what are the issues? And I have a, we look back at the audits for the last two years. Uh we go to page six on both. Roger says something, this is the government's total net position. This is a.
We we were also paying maybe it's years' taxes or five rupees.
Right.
It's a large part of that.
So it says our net position decreased by four hundred sixty five thousand dollars nine hundred thirty.
But that also is based on.
Let me finish. Okay. The decrease is due to revenues being over budgeted by two hundred fifteen thousand twenty seven dollars and expenditures exceeding budget by ninety.
So that was that was us paying the old uh corporate fees and then the old taxes. And that that was us making payments from previous year's money.
So we still over budgeted. And then in twenty twenty four, the net position decreased by a hundred sixty two thousand. Uh and that it says this decrease is due to revenues being over budgeted by two hundred seven thousand. So for two years in a row, we over budgeted by two hundred fifty two thousand and two hundred seven thousand. Uh and so this budget, I think we need to be more conservative as far as our estimated revenue. Uh unless you think there's a reason why that has significant change, because we keep losing, keep spending.
Well, part of that too was that the 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 accounting books were not adjusted. So there were things in the in the liabilities and payables that were not accurate. So they include that as part of the adjustment, but it's not an actual source of earnings.
I understand, but I but I think that's that's we we overestimate our our potential revenue. All right.
I know last year we all included the revenue from the parking lot over the whole.
We had it, it wasn't.
It never happened.
It never happened.
Uh I'm saying that I think we overestimate our uh our collection or traffic collection, right? We do have line barter, but it collects the beach. Uh so that's one thing I wanna look at. Uh the other thing is 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 our total, our total costs, our administrative overhead costs uh to operate the city seem to be excessively high. Right? So we've got uh and 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 part of that is that everybody in our town is a loan, except for my husband, if an employee, right? So we're paying salary, we're paying uh uh retirements, uh we're having to pay FICA, we're having to pay insurance costs. Uh and so we've got to get our administrative overhead, I think, under control and make sure that we have a greater percentage of the money that we spend go to the actual delivery of services. Some potholes and cutting the grass in the park and police patrolling, uh that type of stuff. Uh and and so I figured, we just frankly have too many employees.
Yeah.
Uh and so I'd like to look at the possibility of either converting employees to contractors. I think for for some of these positions, that's that's a possibility. Uh of and or reducing the the staff because of that excess expense, until we actually prove in an actual ideal revenue, we can't keep losing two hundred thousand a year, we don't have the reserves to sustain that. And this is even with the tax, because even the with the with the with the property tax, uh last year, we still lost.
Yeah, because the property tax only covers the debt.
Uh so it's a lot to go in and 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 scrub with, but if we could start by maybe agreeing on some of those points. So yes, we need to reduce our administrative overhead. Uh yes, we need to be a little more conservative of revenue, because we can always adjust the budget as the year goes on, if the revenue does in fact occur. Like we got two thousand the first week, and the end of the yard, after uh by the end of the uh a month or two, we'll we'll be able to better say this is a better estimate of what we're gonna be able to see.
Can't agree with it.
Yeah?
Can't agree with it. Serious problem, okay? And I'm gonna make a motion to the uh this budget with add-on, add-on one two.
What?
That's the motion.
Here we have a motion to approve the budget as a city clerk. Any others discuss? Uh how are we gonna pay for a city clerk?
We don't get the outcome of the motion. We took this as open. We're in a hole so deep, because of what had happened, and I don't like to talk about it. All money that was missing. Casey come in here and we turned it around. We could pay for everything. We didn't get the long attention, we can't do it. We was all, we thanked him. And uh we were able to pay for everything, buy stuff and things like that. So uh it's not like we didn't know what we were doing with the budget. It's not put it that way. We got a management manager in the office. We got one lady working there doing everything, general, if you may, right there. And uh you know, that's no way to run a facility. You you gotta have employee, look, you 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 can't provide work for you, you anywhere you go. You 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 gotta have an insurance firm, you gotta have retirement. And we handle that, we did that. And it didn't break us.
No, we did. We lost two hundred seven thousand dollars last year, and we lost two hundred fifty two thousand the year before. It's unsustainable.
Yeah, but what.
We might be able to get away with it one year, maybe another year, and then we're out of it.
No, we didn't cut any employees, we need to add employees, that is not a motion.
Well, I understand, we're we're in discussion. Uh and so what I'm saying is, I applaud you for getting the the finances better, but we still in the hole. We lost four hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars that we had saved up over fifteen years. Well, we.
Never enough money, we couldn't balance the budget, we didn't balance the budget.
Right, period. But the law requires us to balance the budget.
I'm proud of Sam. You can get there until October sometime.
That's the path. What I'm saying, in this budget, right, we don't have to repeat the mistakes of the past. I think we have to be more conservative with our revenues. I think we have, I think we can and again, I know we're gonna disagree, but I gotta say my piece. I think I think it's we, I think our 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 role as elected officials is to provide the best service to our residents in the best way that we can. And we can do that with an independent contractor.
We've done that the last two.
Instead of paying.
So my motion is.
Whenever we're in discussion, the motion's on the floor, we can discuss and then you vote. And it's and it's gonna be semi-piece. I I think we, if we were to convert some of our employees to contractors, then that would save money in the budget to hire more contractors, right? And and cities operate this all the time. I'm not talking about the senior staff and that kind of stuff. But you know, if we're have, for example, uh somebody cutting the grass, uh that could be done by contract. And that saves us all those overheads, where it's to the point where we can either pay that person more or we can hire additional people or save money for the residents. And so our our purpose is to provide the services that the city residents want and need at the most cost effective we can. And if that means somebody doesn't have premium insurance, but we can find someone else who does, that's our job, our our responsibility. Look at that work chart in the budget, the top of the list above us are the citizens. Right? And we have to, it's their money, we're taking it from them. Uh and and we're the we're tasked with spending it, right? Citizens are at the very top of all work chart, right? Not if they're above us.
I I agree with that.
And so.
If you don't have any money with taxes, you got nothing. It's just like, we're in your office, and you don't have any money coming in, art is up the street.
I'm not talking about tax rate, I'm talking about the budget.
I'm talking about the budget, if you don't have any money.
No, I mean, yeah, I'm not talking about the taxes. This is assuming the tax rate that you guys voted on last hour, that is gonna be reduced.
Tax rate went down.
I called for a question.
No, no, no. Someone finish discussing. I'll play back.
I called for a question. We're discussing.
No.
I was a little bit. A question, you just have to take your record.
It's a it's a record.
Is that okay? All in favor?
It's a record, it's a record.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. There you go.
You're crazy, Sam.
Can I can I remember your name?
Please, we're going to the board, we will have to.
Can I make a question? A minute.
You're crazy.
All right, all in favor, say all right?
All right.
All opposed, say no. Uh Marco's name, question here. All right, uh.
And we'll work with you on that.
You're excellent.
Okay. Uh agenda item is setting the date for the uh tax hearing.
So it would have to be the twenty twelve, unless you're gonna come on Sunday, it would have to be the twenty ninth.
I'm leaving town on the thirtieth. I don't mind coming on Sunday or Saturday, but twenty ninth is next, probably be the twenty ninth early, but.
If it was filed on the twenty seventh, what's exactly thirty days?
It would be the twenty sixth.
Is that Friday?
If it was filed on the twenty seventh?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the twenty sixth, it's the Tuesday.
So you want to do it on that day?
No, it'd be a Friday the twenty sixth.
I'm sorry, I was getting August. Uh Friday the twenty sixth?
So thirty.
That work for me yet?
When you gonna do, when you gonna do?
On the third.
This month?
By September eight.
So you do that.
Uh no, I'm leaving on the third, so I can be the twenty sixth. But I don't want you saying the twenty ninth.
What, twenty one and six?
Twenty six.
On Friday?
On Friday.
Uh it does, uh six five or the day, so. Well, we want to.
Revenue, you want to do it? It's it's the no new revenue, it's not, it's it's.
Yeah, they proved it, it's twenty nine.
Yeah, so we're gonna do it on the twenty sixth, what time you want?
Twenty six, what time?
Maybe sixteen?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
I just have to outpost it again today.
Same time?
Uh sixteen.
Sixteen. Okay.
All right. And then I lost my name there. Uh that was agenda three, I think we're done, except for.
There the twenty twelve, uh.
Sports, there?
They didn't show up.
There it didn't show up. All right, our team, uh do you have any updates regarding city businesses, report from the department, or about the labor sector?
Um the only thing that I wanted to relay was about our meeting with Tony Kudrow's opposition.
Yeah.
So um the mayor and I met with Tony Kudrow, this is off the table today. They met with Saul on our behalf. Basically, Saul is not gonna waive the impact fees. Um we we but however, we don't have to pay them upfront, if we don't behave, we can do it over time. It's based on connections. And in the meantime, we're gonna try to find a bridge to cover those fees. So that's true.
But that's that's a piece of.
That's the way you produce, before they told us we have to pay upfront before we can do anything.
So I think we can actually, might be able to move forward to just pay upon uh.
A connection. But my question for you is, does that mean that we need to approve the USAU, so we can run to the next part of the project?
Uh we do, but we probably wanna make sure that that's in the USAU, that it's paid upon connection.
So is that something you want us to have ready for this twenty sixth meeting from here?
Uh.
I've been trying to get all the proof of it too, so hopefully it's up to you.
Okay. All right, uh should left it off on our candidate motion adjourned? One second, all in favor? It's two forty eight P M, we're.
Um, please.
Fine, let me try that.
We don't know how to turn it on?